If I could have your attention, please, if you're willing and able and capable, if you would stand for an invocation and if you would remain standing for the pledge to defy it, please.
As we get ahead today as members of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our services to our fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring value of life exerting our efforts in those areas and those things which future generations can build upon with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make Henry County the world better. Amen.
Appreciations to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, innocent with liberty and justice for all.
With the Henry County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting 6:30 PM Tuesday, October 15, 2013, come to order. You have agenda placed upon you. I would ask that we consider amending the agenda to add change number 10, Roman numeral 10, says resolution question approval of a resolution supporting a new industrial interchange. Let's make that A, like an alpha. Down below there, let's add a B, like a bravo, and we'll call that the resolution approving a new revenue distribution agreement for the purpose of maintaining the LOST, the Local Option Sales Tax. If somebody would consider that and move approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Have a motion to District 3. Have a second from District 1. Any further discussion, only favorite, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we'll have a proclamation fire prevention. A proclamation recognizing fire prevention month in Henry County, whereas the Henry County Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county, and whereas the fire department is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are in the location where people are the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011. According to the National Fire Protection Association, the fire departments in the United States responded to more than 370,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, with two out of every five homes fires started within the kitchen. Whereas children under the age of five face a high risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking, therefore residents are urged to follow safety guidelines and have a plan in the event of an emergency, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reporting home fires in half, and whereas Henry County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Henry County residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Month theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of October 2013 shall be known as Fire Prevention Month throughout the county, during which time all citizens are urged to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety message of Fire Prevention Month, particularly by checking their kitchen for fire hazards using safe cooking practices and supporting the many public safety activity and efforts of the Henry County Fire and Emergency Services. This 15th day of October 2013, Henry County Board of Commissioners by Tommy Smith, Chairman, attest Shay Matthews County Clerk. Next, we have another proclamation, 2013 kindness week. It's nothing like reading a proclamation and getting up and getting four flashes in your eyes and now you got to read another one. So I got spots. A proclamation recognizing kindness works week in Henry County, November 11 through the 17, 2013, whereas random acts of kindness are the expression of empathy and compassion for one another, and whereas the annual kindness work pass it on week-long celebration is in conjunction with the National Kindness Week commencing on Monday, November 11, 2013, and continuing through Sunday, November 17, 2013, and whereas the Henry County, Georgia will celebrate acts of kindness by encouraging schools, churches, employees, and community groups to participate in kindness works pass it on week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of November 11 through November 17, 2013 be known as kindness works pass it on week in Henry County and urge all residents in Henry County to join in celebrating and performing acts of kindness during the week of November 11, 2013 through November 17, 2013, this 15th day of October 2013. Henry County Board of Commissioners by Tommy Smith, Chairman, attest Shay Matthews County Clerk. Who is present to receive this? Or do I have to pick somebody to come up here? No, I was kidding. Okay, thank you. Next, we have the 15th anniversary of a friend's house. A proclamation in honor of the 15th anniversary of a friend's house, whereas Henry County's A Friend's House opened its door in October 22, 1998, welcoming its first child in need and serves as a home for children in crisis who are in the custody of the Department of Children and Family Services or have been referred by the Department of Juvenile Justice. And whereas for the past 15 years, A Friend's House has been a beacon of light for local children who have been abandoned, abused, neglected, or unwanted, offering them refuge, and whereas although originally designed to serve 12 children and then expanded to care for 24, since its opening of its doors, A Friend's House has served over 1,800 children and trained more than 1,500 volunteers. And whereas in addition to providing children with medical and dental care, counseling, therapy, and academic and school support, staff members work with the children on independent living skills, preparing them to handle various issues such as conflict resolution, anger management, peer pressure, substance abuse, making good choices, career education, and other important life decisions. And whereas in an effort to help these children live a normal and healthy life as possible, staff workers diligently to provide work correction opportunities in the ways of recreation throughout the year, engaging children in many outside activities including sports, events, plays, athletics, and camps, just to name a few. And whereas the goal and objective of A Friend's House is to provide a home that addresses the physical and emotional needs of the children they serve because they believe that all children want is a loving, caring, and safe environment, no matter what circumstances they have encountered in life. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognize the outstanding efforts and accomplishments of A Friend's House and its staff in providing children in need with a stable and loving environment in which to heal and thrive. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes A Friend's House much continued success in the future in making a difference in the lives of children and families, and encouraging all citizens to learn about and support A Friend's House in their noble work in caring for children in our community. This 15th day of October 2013, Henry County Board of Commissioners by Tommy Smith, Chair, and Shay Matthews County Clerk. So if the people of A Friend's House come up, please. Next, we'd like to, we'll have a presentation by the Woodmen of the World and Mr. Craig Skinner, Field Representative.
I'm Craig Skinner, Woodman of the World, and we're here to present the six American flags to the Henry County. And we're a fraternal insurance society that was founded in 1890, and we're one of the largest presenters of American flags in the United States. And we do this and are able to do this through our memberships, which any, which a dollar of any policy that you have with this goes back into the community. And we actually do that through fraternal awards through the schools and through the American flag presentations. And it's really about it, really. But what we're trying to do, though, is get some membership up in Henry County. We actually have two lodges already established in Henry County and almost 1,000 members. So if we can continue to raise that up, that we can continue to present the flags at any time that we see that they're starting to get faded in any kind of any of the parks that are around here. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, you can bring them up here. Let's get a picture. Ms. Burnett.
Thank you for having us back again. My daughter and I are trying to get some help with these penalties, the interest we don't have so much trouble with. But in 2011, we owed $5,558.23 on one piece alone, which was 4020, and I paid $5,000 on it on 12, on May of 12, for the 11 taxes. They in turn, although I only owed $800 for this year on it, they went and charged the whole year interest, the whole year penalty, and I got a statement, I think it's for $133. And some odd cents. So what basically was this year's taxes, I mean my back taxes, according to y'all, are $4,304. I only owed $800, but penalties alone just for 11 were $1,133. So we're asking for some help on that. And I don't understand, my daughter wants y'all to go through this because it says in here that I don't owe anything on 12 on some of the sheets, and we are totally confused now. So we're asking y'all to look over these papers that we have and see what y'all can do to help us because we just don't know. Because we are trying, we've got up some money to get our taxes paid, but going back and charging us, you know, $1,133 on $800, we don't think was right. We don't know if it's fair or legal or whatever, but I would appreciate if y'all would look at these because we have over $3,000 in penalties on one piece, close to it, I think, on 4020. And we have six other pieces, and there's only two pieces that are way up there where we can hardly handle them. One of them is 4079 and 4020.
These are this year's, though. What I don't even know is are they charging?
We have our payment plan. I've been paying like $1,300, $100, $100.
I want to know if they charge any penalties and interest in 2011 or 12.
So is this penalty that we get on, you asking my question?
I guess what I'm asking is on the 2013 taxes, it says that there's back taxes owed, but on the 2012 statement, there is no back taxes on it from 2011. So I'm not understanding if they're charging the penalties and interest on 2011 or 2012.
Which piece of property?
4020.
I'm trying to follow along with you. Somebody borrowed my pen earlier and I don't have one. I have it, I have one, thank you. Which, which piece of property are we talking about?
4020. There's a main piece in 4079.
4020, North.
North Henry Boulevard, I'm sorry. And then 4079, North Henry.
You go ahead and say it again, I'm sorry, I can't.
4020, North Henry and 4079, North Henry Boulevard.
All right.
I might have your pen.
No, that's fine.
So unless it would be, we're showing that as property number two, property number five, is that, is that correct for the board's paperwork?
Looks like it's page 11, 12, 13, you know, of our notes.
We've been appealing and appealing and appealing. We've got a little help this year finally, but we're just trying to get this paid and get started off right again because we actually owe, according to my calculations, like $5,147 in back taxes is what I actually owe, but that is with no penalty and no interest.
I'll tell you guys, I don't completely follow because when you warned me at first when you said that you, $800 property tax assessment, you had $1,000 a penalty. I mean, background in public accounting is IRS, which we're all scared of the IRS, cuts off at 25% of the outstanding liability. And then when I look at our own tax bills, it says 10% penalty will be applied to any bill past 90 days, and then the interest always accrues. It keeps accruing, that's the way the IRS does it, that's the way we do it. When I look at your bills, I don't see those penalties that y'all are talking about that's the 100% of the outstanding tax because I just don't want to mislead the public, and I'll be the first to go on record, I don't even like you guys coming, it's not fair to you guys to have to come before us to do that, and I hope that at some point we change. I agree.
The county knows us.
I will, every one of our citizens know how much we appreciate them, and then to have to come before us because we all have things happen, it's not my favorite thing.
And she really does all of it, but she's sick with cancer.
Right. But can y'all explain that statement that $800 of taxes has $1,000 of penalties?
What I was just, hang on, what I was just asking her, in 2011, or I was looking at the 2013 tax papers, on 2000, on our 2000 that's coming this year, it says there's back taxes owed of $4,400 and something dollars, where's that one?
And leave me the, leave me the property address, too.
On the 4020.
Yeah, and that's, I'm trying to figure it out myself. That's 4020.
North Henry Boulevard, yes, sir.
And then, of course, 2013 taxes being 5271. Help me if you can, Brian, because I'm trying to work through it, too.
Sure.
I appreciate you chiming in because I mean, I'm confused on it myself, but I mean...
With that one, if y'all are talking about the 4387, which is on property 4020, North Henry Boulevard.
Yes.
It shows that there was, the current due was $5,576. Penalty was $451. The interest was $509. There was 30 bucks of other fees. You did apply previous payments, meaning that we gave you credit for $2,180, so the actual total due is $4,387, but the only part that's penalty is 450.
Okay, go back one more year on 11.
But that's what I was trying to ask, I'm trying to figure it because I just noticed this when we got here. Going into, I'm asking, are the penalties and interest on 2012 alone? Because going into 2012, according to the property tax statement, there is no back taxes owed on it.
Well, that's the, that first page, that was the 2012 page that I read to you, and then on the 2030, 2013 statement, which is on page 13 of our handout sheet, it rolls that $4,387, which was the calculation from the previous page, the 2012 calculation, and then the current assessment for 2013 was $5,271. So if you add those two together, but there's no additional penalty showing in 2013.
I've got this piece of paper, I'll show you.
Because it says under appeal.
Yeah, it is, because I don't think I have exactly what you have, I just have, she gave us something to give to y'all, but...
Okay.
What Brian is saying is on 2013, on that bill, it's the back taxes with penalties and interest on it totaling about $1,000. There's $4,387. And then, of course, the taxes for 2013 are $5,271.74, but there's no penalties, interest, or other fees on the 2013 bill, just on the 2012 bill.
It's not due, but if you look back on 2011, what I'm getting at is I paid $5,000 on the building. I only owed $823 and some odd cents.
But I don't think...
Y'all charged me, and when I went to pay it off, the 800, they had me like a $1,900 bill there. And y'all charged me $1,133.22 for that 800 and something dollars.
Okay, let me make...
That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Yes, ma'am. Let me make this perfectly clear.
Yes, sir.
There's no y'all.
I'm sorry.
It is the tax assessor, it's his office, we have no control whatsoever. We can look at this, we can't waive taxes. I mean, that's, that's a constitutionally elected office. There's not a y'all, we're not, we're trying to see what's going on, but there's not a y'all here.
All right.
Can you ask the staff person to kind of, there seems to be a lot of confusion in this case, and I hate, this is the second time you guys have had, the fourth time they've had to appear.
Well, we were on the books, and the books didn't show we were due, so we got it taken care of by a very, but I appreciate y'all seeing us and I thank you.
I think maybe now that I noticed this, I'm thinking that maybe she might be confused about where...
No, I'm not confused on 11.
Not, I mean, if you only owed $800, then they could...
And full disclosure, we don't have anything with 2011 in our books. We have 2012 and 2013 in our books.
That's what I was explaining to her.
I have it right here. And the lady told me if I would give y'all this folder, y'all would know what it is. She said, because y'all gonna have close to the same thing. That's what she said, but, you know, like I said, we need to sit down with somebody because I know that if you can do it, it's fine.
But see, right here, it's saying there's a zero balance. I mean, I don't, I don't, and see, this is for 2012, it's 2012 they're, that they're putting the penalties and interest on, not 2011.
There's the penalty for 2011.
But what I'm seeing is, I think there's some confusion about the bill. It'd be nice if we had a staff person walk you through, maybe even if they have to do it with a laptop with an Excel spreadsheet, look at and allocate these payments so you understand what's principal interest. Because I, once again, I just want to say, we don't charge 100% penalty, it's just, we cap it out, it appears, at 10%, and then the interest keeps rolling.
Oh, 58, 55, y'all charged me 550 and 550.
Right.
He, he, well, we need to sit down with somebody.
And I had already paid the 5,000, only owed eight.
But I think they're saying...
That's the problem.
Who can we say?
I think they're saying they're not showing the charges.
Let's just talk to somebody else, let's see what they can do.
Yeah, I think David Curry.
Really, I think Commissioner Preston's got a real good idea. I think what we need to do, because if we have to rule on it right now, I'm going to have to rule to deny it, we have no legal reason to do, to do anything with it, but what I think we should do is set up an appointment with a staff member or with, and try to get maybe somebody from the tax assessor's office or someone to go through each and every one with you and ask you to come back one more time after you've looked at everything you can look at. Otherwise, we have nowhere to go.
Like sat down, because I noticed on, going into 2012, it shows there's no back taxes due on the 2012 statement, so I was telling her, it's got to be for 2012 that they're talking about, not 2011, so...
It's 11, because that's what I'm questioning, 4020.
I'll get with somebody and meet with them.
Thank you.
We'll be more than happy to try to set it up if you'd call our offices and talk, we'd be more than happy to. And I'll ask County Manager, Mr. Harris, if he would get the phone numbers and see if you can work something out so we can work through this. I don't, I don't like having to ask them to come back, but at the same token, we're confused, we don't show the things, we don't show what you're talking about. It's not, we have everything on this, and it gives us...
I noticed it when I sat down the second time.
My last 2011 bill, it's on there, 550 and 550.
Yes, ma'am.
And only owed eight.
Okay, well...
Can you work with the staff in the tax commissioner's office to make sure we sit down and go over their specific questions? So we'll be in touch with you, I'll give you a call this week. Someone from my office will give you a call this week, and we'll schedule a time. Yeah, I don't know if I have your number.
Someone's been sending me emails about the appeals on, on the same thing.
That's the county clerk, yes, ma'am. So we'll have your contact information, we'll make sure to contact you, yes. Michael Harris.
I'll call you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Totally different process in reviewing these tax statements. I'm really uncomfortable with people coming up here on TV in front of, all these people airing their laundry, and it has to be very difficult for them, so if, I don't know if staff can look into developing another process or sending it back to the tax commissioner, I just think we need to look at it.
The only thing in my mind we can do is have it in conference room B, and it won't be televised. Other than that, I might be corrected, but anything of...
If we, if we so gave him the authorization to do that?
Yeah.
Because it is very frustrating, I mean, we all have things. I mean, I've had where I've had a credit card bill payment, as I moved addresses or something, go to the wrong place, and you call the credit card, and you apologize, and you get it straightened out. But did I want to do that in front of everybody in the community that I live in? No way. And it's not fair to our citizens to keep doing this process. I really hope that we can find a way to do, go back. And I understand that there were some, some things that were talked about in the past on why that wasn't liked, but I think we've seen, this is, this is not in the best interest of the citizens. That's my thoughts, and I'd love to have, if other commissioners would like to have the staff look at that, too.
We just need to have it in front of a committee, or someone who can make an unbiased decision on each and every individual that comes before the board with the situation. So, I don't think we can do it as a board, because many of us are looking at people that actually either voted for us.
We would all have to eventually come before the board, that is a board decision. Only the board can waiver the interest and the penalty. Now, you could have a committee to make recommendations to the board, but it would still have to be in public session, because that's, it's just the nature, it has to be in the light, because you're basically giving something like gratuity, or something. Counselor, would you highlight on some...
Georgia law allows the commissioners to delegate this authority to the tax commissioner. A number of the citizens' questions and concerns are properly resolved at the tax commissioner level, as far as explaining the bill, explaining the penalties and interest. I know they do a wonderful job explaining those, I've seen them do it in the past, so I'm not sure if they went that route, I didn't hear them say that. But as far as your concern, Commissioner Preston and Commissioner Holmes, the board could re-delegate that authority to the tax commissioner, and assuming he accepts that delegated authority, then that would take place in his office, as opposed to in this forum. The resolution of these issues.
I think that poses a problem, because in '09, when the board at that time delegated that, in '09, the tax commissioner at the stroke of a pen waived $1.3 million worth of taxes, which was 6,148 tracts of land. And that's why it needs to be in public, because it has to come before the board. The law, as I understand it, the tax commissioner can be delegated that authority, and there's no public hearing, nothing at the stroke of the pen, the tax commissioner can have the discretion to do that. But if it comes before this board, it has to come before this board. So you correct me if I'm wrong. That's why I would be adamantly against giving it to the tax commissioner, because it seems like to me, in '09, it was abused drastically.
Well, I know that in '09, '08 and '09, I know that from how many numbers of tax appeals, the volumes of tax appeals that we had, but the market tanked, and there were a number of foreclosures, there were a number of FDIC acquired properties, based upon the number of bank failures that Henry County had. And the FDIC just doesn't pay these local interests and penalties, they don't do it, there are federal regulations that limit their liability. And so, in a number of instances, I know the tax commissioner had no choice but to write off those FDIC loans. Now, I don't know what percentage of the total amount that you quoted, but I do know that that was a large number of waivers that came from that, because we dealt with trying to get the FDIC, my office personally dealt with trying to force the FDIC to pay these things, and, you know, fighting the federal government, their rules are their rules, I, you know, I mean, so, and in addition to that, there were a number of tax appeal cases, and the law limits the interest and waivers and penalties that can accrue on the appeal taxes. And so, there were a number of extenuating circumstances, Chairman, I can't speak to each and every one of them, but I do know that that accounted for a significant portion of the waivers.
Well, out of the 6,148 tracts of land, through his own confession, the tax commissioner said 30% of them was FID, FDIC, and he couldn't do anything, I understand that, but I'm just throwing that for conversation. But is there a better method? It probably could be, and I think we need to look at that. And if the board by majority wanted to put it back under the tax commissioner, then I, obviously, we'd have to honor that as well, too. I want to clear up one thing. The chairman brought up $1.3 million in taxes, we didn't waive any taxes, they may have been penalties and interest, I just want to clear it up. That's what I thought I heard, I just want to be sure.
Well, if I said that, I misspoke.
The other thing is, you know, it seems, it seems like that there's, it would be a simpler process in the tax commissioner's office, simply now, when it brought before, I had voted against it. But I voted against it for one reason, and one reason only, it put a lot of pressure on one person to have to do it, as opposed to the board. Okay. However, there's ones that we've seen that have come to us, could have been handled, because it's like the one that just left, there's so, we don't have all the information that she had in her folder, so we're gonna require her now to have to go see them and come back, when it could have been handled in, maybe in one, one deal. Might, you know, and, because the tax commissioner has no authority to waive taxes, only penalties and interest, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that we were correct on that, I mean...
Maybe I misspoke.
Well, that's the way I heard it, I'm not saying, you know, and I'm hard to hear, and so, I mean, that might be, not be the way you said it or meant it, but at the end of the day, that's what I heard, so... Does everybody agree we try to find another avenue? Does anybody else have any comments, or you wanna accept that, as we'll try to find another avenue?
Well, I just want to add one more comment, is that, just seeing what happened here tonight, I know, and I'll go back to probably a month and a half ago, we had another good citizen, taxpayer, who had, you know, clerical issue with the mail. I don't, I would like to say we don't hear anymore here publicly until we get that issue resolved, because it is not fair to our citizens. And adding a little common sense to government, is that you saw, we had somebody bringing up tax years 2011, 2010, and previous, and we have 2012 and 2013 in this folder, and this is all we have, we don't deal with these tracts of property. This is a hat that I don't think is the county commissioner hat, when we have an elected constitutional authority to the tax commissioner, where he's dealing with this on a day-to-day basis, and he's not paving roads, he's not figuring out SPOLOs list, he's handling the tax digest and the property tax. Why don't we let the constitutional authority that's been elected by the people to handle the tax digest, handle these type of cases? So, I would like us to look at moving this up with the thought that we table any discussion, so we don't put any more citizens that have to show up here by their own accord four times in front of the public. And air their, as Commissioner Holmes said, their laundry in public, this is why people hate government. It really is, and I hope we can move forward and change that process.
Okay, does everybody agree? Okay, we're gonna move on. Next, we have a request up here before the board, Mr. Steve Richardson. And I understand they found you a court.
Steve Richardson, 2071 Drive.
Are you hooked up?
Nah, I can talk a minute. Last meeting, we talked about some DOT numbers and the situation. After the meeting, Sergeant Smalley called down to Captain Ayers in Madison, Georgia, who is in charge, who's basically the liaison between the federal, between Washington and the state. He's captain with Motor Carrier Compliance Division. And subsequently, there was a letter written by the federal government to exempt Elkins towing from having to have a intrastate, bottom line is, they got an exemption letter. Right after the exemption letter, the feds changed the rules. So once the government decides to quit acting like Democrats, Republicans, and tea sippers, and decides to go back to work and be Americans, I'll do a Freedom of Information Act request and get that, since the county doesn't have it. Now, it still doesn't relieve the county of any, the county had no knowledge of this until two weeks ago, which, in the meantime, they've changed owners, changed names, and didn't have a DOT number, but that's neither here nor there. But I just wanted to clarify that there was some more information that come about that when we left the meeting last time. We talked extensively about what a tow and a recovery is, and what non-consensual and consensual towing is, and we've read a lot of those federal definitions, but, in the paperwork I give you, Your Honor, I give you the definitions of what emergency tow is in accordance with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. And if I may read that while, I'm trying to find the cable. "Emergency means any hurricane, tornado, storm, high water, wind-driven water, tidal wave, tsunami, earthquake, volcanic eruption, mudslide, drought, forest fire, explosion, blackout, or other occurrence, natural or man-made, which interrupts the delivery of essential services, such electricity, medical care, sewer water, telecommunications, telecommunication transmission, or essential supplies such as food and water, or otherwise immediately threatens human life or public welfare. Provided such hurricane, tornado, or other event results in, A, is a declaration of emergency by the president, and B, a request by a police officer for tow trucks to move wrecked or disabled motor vehicles." So what we do out there, when a police officer calls, is federally mandated as an emergency, not a non-consensual tow, so. And I got a video for you guys, if we can find it. Is that right, there a video? We should just tell she it took two to do her job, so that should make her feel good. And they still ain't done it, so, they try. If it didn't work, I don't know how to help you. Don't screw up, I think. Oh, that's right, I don't know. Oh, 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 sorry.
You've been in front of us probably the last four to six meetings, and I'm just, I just want to try to understand, what exactly are you trying to accomplish?
I'm trying to educate the people of this county of what the definition are, of what we do out there. I'm trying to educate them on the procedures of how things are done, and where the controlling authorities are. I've sent several meetings with the, with county officials, I've helped correct an ordinance that's been on the agenda several times, and that's what I'm gonna talk about next week, to no avail. When you got, is that as clear as it can be? This is, this is, this is a wreck on 75 to 224 at High Moon. According to the TMC cameras, traffic was backed up towards South Lake, almost at South Lake Mall, and all the way down to Exit 11. This wreck right here, I'm sorry. As you can see, that truck right there was decapitated by that sheet metal, so there's 11 gallons of oil out of that truck, 15 gallons of antifreeze out of this other truck. At the end of the day, the bill for the truck with the sheet metal on it was $8,000. Four months later, the county comes back and says, you can't charge that, you can only charge $650. Now, you see all the manpower out here, and the wreckers and the ability that it took to clean up this scene, it's more than $650 worth. I mean, that's not, I mean, it's not even feasible to take over a million dollars with equipment out, with all the training and everything else, clean up the roads, go back the next day and clean up all the oil, get it out of the foliage and everything else, which is what's required by state law. No matter what your ordinance says, the state and federal law says we have to do it, or the wrecker service has to. All that was cleaned up, and your road was open. If you go out there today, there's no stains, no nothing, it's all completely the way it was prior to the wreck. The next incident, this one will get through here, it just shows all the oil and stuff in the foliage. The road was open, the whole, the whole road was open in less than an hour, by the way. Traffic was flowing at its norm. And this is all on file with the TMC and all the cameras. The next wreck was in a, this right here, was in a controlled environment, it's a huge, I don't know how to stop this thing. The, the first wreck was on, obviously, on I-75, where there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity for secondary incidents and other things to happen, all right? Four months after the fact, $650. And this is in writing from the county. This incident here was in a controlled environment, it was in an industrial park, the driver was going too fast, lost control, flipped his truck and trailer. There were three wrecker services involved, one that uprighted the truck, one that cleaned up all the hazmat, and one that towed it away. The one that uprighted the truck was called by the county, and just to lift the truck up, charged them $11,000. The hazmat cleanup was over $13,000. And I'm assuming samples come out of Atlanta, probably charged another $1,500 to $2,000 to drop the load and take the casualty away. But as you can see from the pictures, this went down in the sewer and everything else, I mean, it was a pretty significant spill. My point is, the only difference between the two, besides the fact that one was in a controlled environment, and one was in an active interstate, is who made the phone call. The wrecker service that charged $11,000, nobody complained. And this just happened a couple of weeks ago, back in July, end of July. There's no complaints, no, nothing's done, nothing's said, no investigations, no suspensions, no anything. When you, but when the police call you out there, when it's very clear that they have no authority per federal and state regulations, and they tell you what you can't do, that's why I'm up here. And until the ordinance gets fixed, and I've sat back there for hours in y'all's conference room to fix it, until it comes out here and gets fixed, I'm gonna keep coming up here, and I'm gonna keep showing all the flaws. It's not fair for the people of this county. Like I said before, we're not out there chasing, chasing wrecks or anything, we're out there because somebody at 911, somebody at Mr. Ash's office has called us out there because something has happened. Should there be some regulation? Sure. It shouldn't just be a wildcat like you see on TV, everybody with a scanner just runs to the scene. But there's, there's wrecker service in this county that are highly trained, have more equipment, better equipment, and know what they're doing, and have the proper numbers and stuff, and don't need federal exemptions because they don't fail drug and alcohol tests, okay? So that's why I'm up here. I'm up here to fight for what's right, and what the people out here work, just like you guys said, Mr. Preston said, you shouldn't have to air your dirty laundry up here. But this, if this is the only form to do it, and when you try to do it behind closed doors, and it doesn't get done, what do you do? This is the only option. So I've laid out all the laws, I continue to lay out all the laws, I provide them to Mr. Chairman, I'll provide them to you guys if you like them, they're accessible by the computer, these are federal and state laws that mandate what you can and can't do, and what we have to do out there. If there's a wreck, let's say there's a wreck out here at the intersection, Mr. Preston gets in a wreck with Mr. Smith, and there's oil and fluids everywhere, and this wrecker service don't clean it up, and here you come on your little scooter, and you dump it, and you fly, or your kid dumps it, and he hits his head on the curb, and he's paralyzed, who are you gonna sue? Well, it's not the fire department, they turn it over to police. Police, you know, turn it over to the EMS or whatever, it's on the wrecker service. So you're handcuffing the wrecker service, telling them they can only charge $100 to tow a car, or $650 to tow, to clean up a big mess on four lanes of interstate. That's, that's what I'm trying to, that's the point I'm trying to prove. It's a good question, I appreciate you asking it. But when somebody tells you, that bill out there was $25,000, and nobody complained. That's pretty much all I got today. Any more questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll say one more thing. I know you've come before several months now, and I'm glad that Commissioner Holmes asked the question, because that's, that's the thing, I didn't, I get it a little better now, after you've explained why you've been coming and sharing this, and we'll, I'll tell you, I'll personally take it under advisement, that, you know, and I've got some other concerns that I've gotten from other wrecker companies, and we'll talk to staff. I'm not gonna promise that we're gonna take action immediately, but I think you've started the process by at least coming before. You can continue, I'm just telling, giving you feedback based upon the question that I just heard.
Here's my problem. I was told in January, if I didn't rewrite it, it wasn't gonna be rewrote, okay? So I helped rewrite it. It's set in there in March, if we're gonna have this conversation now, it's set there in March, on your books, you can pull up on your website, that the wrecker service had to go get permits from DDS. Well, anybody in this room who's got a driver's license knows DDS don't hand out permits for wrecker services, they hand out driver's licenses. That's just one of many flaws. Then we go to the next one in May, which got tabled, because it had over 34 errors, and I sat back there for two and a half hours to fix it, we had to go to the Henry County US Marshal and turn in paperwork. Well, I've only lived here since 98, and I've never met a Henry County marshal, so... in March, on your books, you can pull up on your website, that the wrecker service had to go get permits from DDS. Well, anybody in this room who's got a driver's license knows DDS don't hand out permits for wrecker services, they hand out driver's licenses. That's just one of many flaws. Then we go to the next one in May, which got tabled, because it had over thirty-four errors, and I sat back there for two and a half hours to fix it, we had to go to the Henry County US Marshal and turn in paperwork. Well, I've only lived here since ninety-eight, and I've never met a Henry County marshal. So if I'm missing something, show me where they're at. That's just one error. There's many errors, and they're just simple errors. I get the, you guys aren't in the wrecker business, you shouldn't be in the wrecker business, no more than you're in Truitt-Cathy's business up there selling chicken sandwiches, all right? Some wrecker service in this town have their rates posted with Superior Court, so there is none of this, okay? And I get the fact that we want to protect Ma and Pa Kettle, I get that, okay? But understand, if Ma and Pa Kettle didn't do something wrong, that police officer wouldn't be out there, that fire engine wouldn't be out there, that ambulance wouldn't be out there, and neither would the wrecker service. You guys get compensated highly for what you do, and then, yes, it's true, not every ambulance call that you get out there, you get paid for. Well, guess what? Not every call that gets towed off that scene out there gets paid for. But the difference is that everything that's out there on that scene, except for that wrecker, is paid for by county, state, or federal money. That wrecker is paid for by the feller or fellarette that owns the wrecker, including the training, the fuel, the wear and tear. You break a motor, Brad Johnson comes up here and asks for twenty thousand dollars to fix a motor. Wrecker service breaks a motor, they're digging in their pocket. You can't do that at a hundred and five dollars. You can't go with the training, and some of these wrecker guys have more training than some of your fire guys, and some of them have just as much and can work hand in hand together. There's some of your fire guys that know more than some of your wrecker guys in this town. I've been on scene, sitting there watching, I mean, it's amazing what some of your fire guys know, and a lot of the same tools that y'all carry, the wrecker service carries. But the difference is with those bags and pipe poles and everything else, the wrecker people pay for it. The county didn't pay for them. You know, when your stuff gets, gets old, you throw it into surplus. Major Goin's gonna come here and throw stuff in the surplus. When ours has to go to surplus, the wrecker service, they gotta go buy more out of their own pocket.
I think you're misunderstanding the point. I, I think you made a good point-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-that we're going to, we understand what you're looking for now, and then you've come back and just, and I understand you're frustrated, but-
I've come back because I've done this three times. It's been on the agenda three times, been stopped all three times, you can pull it up yourself. I fixed it, I've showed the laws where it makes it legal, not just fair and just, but legal, so there's no more of this lawsuits and stuff that could possibly be going on to make it right, and it's been sitting back there since March twenty-third. That's why I'm frustrated. I'm sorry. Is there any other questions?
Does staff have any comments?
Chairman, I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Ash regarding, regarding the wrecker services, you know, not much of the latest comments from Mr. Richardson's comments from today, certainly from, Don has responded on some of the previous comments that have been made. Staff would be happy to sit down with the commissioners and give our input on current status and where things stand at this point, whether that's now or at another time. Should be happy to be directed by staff and let them know exactly, you know, where, what's occurred so far to date and steps going forward.
I'm sorry, who did you say was speaking with?
I've spoken with Don Ash.
Oh, Mr. Ash, okay. I thought you said Elf, I was like, I don't know who that is, so, sorry.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much. Next, we move down to consent, agenda items. First on the consent agenda, before we get started, does anybody have, would like to take this out and put it out for discussion, or I'll read them and then you can make that First one I will read, resolution request and acceptance of a donation of a Benson gyrocopter to the Military Museum at Heritage Park. Whereas the Henry County, whereas the Henry County has a military museum located at Heritage Park, whereas the General Service Administration, GSA, has agreed to donate a Benson gyro model X dash twenty-five alpha serial number November six-one charter November, together with all engines and accessories, to the Military Museum at Heritage Park. And whereas the cost to transfer the gyrocopter is two hundred dollars to be paid for by donations made by the Military Museum, and whereas the gyrocopter will be on display at the Military Museum at Heritage Park, now therefore that be resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissions accepted donation of a Benson gyrocopter serial number so-and-so, and together agree with the engine and accessories and authorized the chairman to sign any and all the documents to complete the transfer. All general interest needed to be accounted for this transition hereby approved of this resolution. Second.
I had a tour of the Veterans Museum probably about a month ago, and I just want to say it was, it was remarkable. I had no idea we had that kind of history right here in Henry County, so I just want, I just want everybody to experience what I experienced and take an opportunity to visit the museum, support it financially if you, if you, if you can, but it is truly a jewel right here in our county.
Resolution request and adoption of an ADA transition, transition plan for Henry County. Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissions adopting an ADA transition plan, whereas access to civil life by people with disabilities is a fundamental goal of the American with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure that the goal is met. Title II of the ADA requires state and local governments to make their program and services available, correction, accessible to persons with disability, whereas the requirement extends not only to physical access to governmental facilities, programs, and events, but also policy changes that government entities must make to ensure that all people with disabilities can take part in and benefit from the program and services of state and local governments. Whereas to maintain eligibility for federal transportation funding of the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, has requested a copy of each county's transitional plan for compliance with Title II of the American with Disability ADA, whereas the nineteen-ninety Americans with Disability Act stipulated that every public agency with more than fifty employees have an ADA transitional plan, transition plan. Whereas each county transition plan has to be completed by July the twenty-sixth of nineteen-ninety-two with the removal of any physical barricades identified therein by January the twenty-sixth of nineteen-ninety-five. If a county did not develop a plan or cannot locate the original plan, the new plan can be written and submitted, whereas county staff has completed a plan for the approval of the Board of Commissions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissions hereby adopt the ADA transition plan for Henry County as required under Title II of the American Disability Act. Third, resolution request and authorization to declare expired ballistic missiles as surplus. As the resolution here says, whereas the correction, the resolution of the Board of Commissions declaring expired ballistic vests held by the police department as surplus property, whereas the Henry County Board of Commissions is a custodian of county assets, and whereas the police department has expired ballistic vests that have been declared expired, unserviceable, and no longer needed by the county, the police department recommends expired ballistic vests to be declared as surplus property, whereas the police department has identified Fiber Brokers International as a business to secure, destroy, and recycle the ballistic vest, and whereas Fiber Broker International will pay for the freight charges to transport the vests to their facility and restore the vests at no charge, and whereas completion of this destruction, Fiber Broker International will provide the police department with a certification of destruction. Now therefore be it resolved that Henry County Board of Commissions do hereby declare the expired ballistic vests as surplus property and authorize the Fiber Broker International to destroy the vests at no charge to the county. Be it resolved, this board, the board authorized the chairman to execute all the necessary documents to complete this transition, transaction. Resolution request and appointment to the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board. The resolution of the Board of Commissions appointment to the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board, whereas the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board has four Henry County representatives participating in the governance of public behavioral health services for a seven-county area. Carolyn Brown's appointment expires on June the thirtieth, twenty thirteen, expired on June the thirtieth, twenty thirteen, and Mrs. Brown has stated she is available to serve another term, three-year term, if reappointed. Ms. Brown has served on the board since nineteen-ninety-nine and is a valued member and active advocate of the McIntosh Trail CSB consumers. Whereas the McIntosh Trail Board will benefit from the continuity he would provide by remaining as representative, and the board would appreciate her appointment. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissions hereby reappoint Carolyn Brown to serve as a member of the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board for a term ending July the thirtieth, twenty sixteen, this fifteenth day of October, twenty thirteen. If that's, no any, any comments, does somebody move to approve the agenda consent items as read? Have a motion by District Two, second by District Five, all in favor, correction, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, thank you so much. Next, we have a resolution request and approval, a resolution supporting a new industrial This is, this is a lengthy, who would have more knowledge about this than I would?
Chairman, I can have to read it, I'm not sure-
For the board's consideration, we're asking for adoption on this?
Yeah.
I can, I can read the whole thing, and that would make it legal, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna read that.
Do you want me to give an introduction to this?
Sir?
Do you want me to give some type of introduction to it before you read the resolution?
Yes.
Just for the citizens?
Yes. Give a summary, it wasn't in the book, give a summary of what this is all about.
We've had several discussions on this. One of the things that's, that's going on, just long-term transportation issues in Henry County, and I know we have in the, the audience, we have the Henry County Council for Quality Growth, Mr. Steve Cash out there, and then we also have the Chamber of Commerce for Henry County, David Gill in the audience as well, and we've had many discussions, both at the state level, we've even had a chance to go up there, had a delegation to go up there and meet with Toby Carr and other state officials, talking about our concerns, because we all know the ports are opening up in the coming years down in Savannah, there's gonna be a lot more traffic coming up seventy-five from that. We also have these express lanes that are coming into Henry County, they could be running right down the center median of I seventy-five, and anybody who's familiar with one-fifty-five headed towards Griffin, as well as twenty-eighty-one headed towards Hampton, knows that pretty much any time during the day, those corridors that are tied into our industrial distribution chains and logistics are stuck. We've got minivans, you know, with, with children and families on the same roads as a lot of our semi-trucks, and it's just, it's gridlocked. I mean, and we've, we've actually have a lot of our businesses in the logistic industrial phase that are starting to go vacant. And the primary killer for a lot of these buildings is the transportation traffic. I mean, it's gridlocked out there and nothing is occurring, so we're trying to be proactive. We recognize that when you talk about interchanges on an interstate, a federal interstate, this is not a fast-moving process, this is more of a vision process, to where we're just trying to get the ball rolling, to try to come up with a solution where we get those semi-trucks that are on one-fifty-five, those semi-trucks that are on twenty-eighty-one, try to consolidate them to some type of interchange where we could get those, you know, those trucks an easier way to get onto I seventy-five and get them off of some of our main arteries in Henry County. And that's what, that's the primary part of this resolution is, because when we talked to the GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation officials, they kind of gave us a layout of how you create that vision. First, we've got to come up with a resolution from the commissioners showing our support. Then we need to get community involvement by the citizens as well as the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, and then also get buy-in from other stakeholders, and that's where the Henry County Council for Quality of Growth has been very helpful in that as well. So that's kind of a, a quick intro.
Okay.
Did you say we're going from forty-two over to Greenwood?
Well, we don't really get to say that either, completely, because that will all come through, there's a lot of studies that now have to, this is just the very beginning part, but we're, we're hopeful that it would be between twenty-sixteen, which is the one-fifty-five exit, and, you know, and that Bethlehem Bridge, so somewhere between around the Greenwood area, because that's where all the industrial property is. But we can't really determine that until the federal government and the state government get involved.
Any other questions before I read the resolution? Having said that, have a resolution of the Board of Commissions of Henry County, Georgia, in support of a new industrial interchange and for other purposes. Whereas Henry County is a central and prominent location for the logistic industry of manufacturing, especially at the Savannah Port extending, expands to accommodate new Panamax supercargo tankers, and whereas the Board of Commission of Henry County, Georgia hereby referred to as the board, wishes to promote the existing industry located within the industrial park as well as to attract new manufacturing to Henry County, and whereas the board desires a new interchange to substantially reduce truck traffic at Interstate seventy-five, hereafter known as I seventy-five, and exit two-sixteen, and along Georgia State Route one-fifty-five from McDonough, south of Spaulding County, and traffic along State Route forty-two from McDonough, south to Locust Grove, and whereas it is the intention of the board that the new interchange direct industrial traffic through industrial side roads in a manner that will be conducive to industrial use. And whereas the board wishes to determine a location which has provided the greatest interconnectivity amongst the following industrial parks, Liberty, Greenwood, Midland, Kingsmill, and West Ridge, and emerging industrial sites in the general area. And whereas the board of, the board's intention for the location of the new interchange to be south of exit two-sixteen and north of the Bethlehem Road Crossing of Interstate seventy-five in an area that minimizes the impact on the environment, historical sites, and communities. Whereas the local government in Henry County has agreed to a splash appropriation if passed by the voters of Henry County in the amount of five-point-five million for planning, engineering, land acquisition, and partial construction of such an interchange. And whereas Henry County will proceed with preliminary studies on the location of said interchange, including but not limited to the completion of the interchange justification report. And whereas this project is a top transportation priority for Henry County, and a comprehensive transportation plan should be amended to reflect this project as a priority project in Henry County. Whereas the board wishes for the planning, engineering, design, and land acquisition of this project to be identified on the transportation improvement program for the Atlanta region, and the construction phase to be placed on a regional transportation plan for the Atlanta region. And whereas the board wishes to transmit this resolution to appropriate entities and leaders, now therefore be it resolved that the board determine that a new interchange, as described in the preamble of this resolution, it is the best instance of the system for Henry County, a priority transportation project for Henry County to alleviate truck traffic, promote existing industries, as well as attract new industry to Henry County. Be it further resolved, the board shall proceed with a preliminary study of the location of said intersection, including but not limited to the completion of the interchange justification report, and feasibility amended to the comprehensive transportation plan, and request that this project be added to the Atlanta Region Commission Improvement Program and Regional Transportation Plan in accordance with the preamble of this resolution. Be it further resolved, the board directs the county clerk to transmit this resolution to the governor, the delegation of the representative, and the senators of the General Assembly representing Henry County, Georgia, each U.S. Representative and U.S. Senator representing Henry County, Georgia, the commissioner of the Department of Transportation, each board member of the Georgia Department of Transportation, the representatives of the Henry, of Henry County on the Atlanta Regional Commission, the commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, and the commissioner of State Economic Development, this fifteenth day of October, twenty thirteen, Henry County Board of Commissions, Tommy Smith, and Tess Shay Matthews, if somebody would move, we approve this resolution. Have a motion from District One to approve.
I'll second.
Second from District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved, thank you so much. Next on the agenda, this is one we added on, if you remember. It's a resolution approval, approving a new revenue distribution agreement for the purpose of maintaining the local option sales tax for benefits of providing continued property tax relief to Henry County citizens. Attorney Latonya Wiley is best appropriate to present this because it's all legal. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Last year, the county engaged in a process known as baseball arbitration, which was established in twenty-ten by the Georgia Legislature in order to determine how the penny sales tax, the lost penny sales tax, will be distributed amongst the county and the cities. By way of historical reference, loss is a one percent penny sales tax. It was approved by voter referendum in Henry County many years ago, and the law requires that every ten years, that redistribution arrangement as to how those funds will be allocated, be renegotiated amongst the jurisdictions that impose the tax. It is a joint county city tax. It is a joint county-city tax. In prior years, before 2010, the law provided that if neither party could come to an agreement, the city and the county, the county and the cities could not come to a mutual agreement, then the tax will be lost altogether and forfeited. So, in, in past years, the county and the city have, all, cities have always reached an agreement. However, as I stated in 2010, the Legislature enacted this new process to help the parties arrive at a distribution arrangement that would not result in a forfeiture of the tax. So, if the parties went through mediation and, and they could not agree, then they would resort to baseball arbitration, which involved filing a petition in Superior Court, submitting your best and final offer on either side, and then a judge will have a hearing and determine who position it would take and how the money from the tax would be distributed. The county engaged in that process last December, and a new distribution arrangement was the result of that process with the four cities. However, last week, on October 7th, the Georgia Supreme Court declared that process unconstitutional, and basically stated that, that the imposition of tax and how that money is to be allocated is purely a legislative function, in that the judiciary had no business being involved in any manner with the imposition of that tax. And it was basically a separation of powers issue, and the court struck down the provision that we all relied upon last year to come up with the revenue distribution arrangement. Well, that, of course, left a big vacuum as to what do we do now? For the, for the citizens' benefits, that the proceeds from the lost are required to be used to roll back property taxes. So, all the money that comes in, this county and the four cities will roll back the property taxes in an equal amount, and that, so lost provides a direct benefit to our citizens. We were seeing the call, I believe the chairman was seeing the call, and county attorneys across the state were seeing calls from ACCG General Counsel advising that the Department of Revenue, who administers the tax, is requiring each jurisdiction who undertook that process that now declare unconstitutional, baseball arbitration process, to file new certificates. And we have to file new certificates by 4:30 on Thursday. And as we move forward, the Department of Revenue and Attorney General will issue opinions, but I will tell you all that it's been very much a moving target for the past week, and things are changing. And I think I forwarded all the email tonight, while we were sitting here during the meeting. We're still waiting for some answers and direction. And so, what I have before you all is a resolution that was prepared outlining and summarizing what I've just explained, and attached to the resolution are two certificates of distribution that would apply to lost, that would go forward through December of 2014. And the hope and expectation is, is that when the General Assembly convenes in January of next year, that they will take up this matter to rectify the unconstitutional provision that the, the court struck down last week. The great unknown is, how are they going to rectify it, in what manner, and what does that mean? And those are just unknowns that we can't speculate. We assume and hope, of course, that the Legislature will take steps to preserve everything and allow the parties, the affected jurisdictions, to come out unscathed, because in good faith reliance upon the law, we engaged in this baseball arbitration process. We had no choice. Had we not done that, we could've lost the tax. Just by way of reference, the court, Turner County filed a motion when, during their lost negotiation process, they filed a motion to dismiss alleging that the statute was unconstitutional. And that's how this case that came out last week wound its way through the system. So, we knew that was out there, but the wheels of justice sometimes turn slow, and it just made its way through the court system, and an opinion was issued October 7th. And also in the resolution, in the, in the resolve clause, what we're asking on paragraph two of the, next to the last page, is between now and Thursday at 4:30, I don't know what's going to come down. I don't know what kind of edict will come down from the Department of Revenue. I don't know what the Attorney General may issue some advice and opinion on, but I want to ask the Commissioners, keeping in mind that we will keep you informed every step of the way, but if by chance something comes down that will require the chairman or require the county to execute some additional or new document, that he may also be given that authority in this resolution, so that we can account for any ever-changing rules that are coming down. We've had several conference calls, we've had emails going back and forth, but to date, we have not gotten any written directives from the Department of Revenue or the Attorney General's office who represents the Department of Revenue. So, we're all waiting to see. And that paragraph two, if you all, we don't normally put things like that in our resolutions, but given the gravity of this situation, and given the ever-moving target that this ball is progressing under, we would ask, I would ask that you consider approving the resolution with that provision. And I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Let me, uh, share my involvement. Friday, as you know, I was out of town. About 5:15, I got a call from Clint from ACCG, and he said that they just left a meeting with the Revenue Commissioner. And he indicated that any parts of the negotiation that had started or finished judicially under the
Baseball.
Baseball arbitration was found null and void, and that the ones that did participate in that method needed to have a new certificate of distribution in his office by 4:30 Thursday. Okay, now, having said that, the original was a 10-year deal. We also know that e, e, even as late as, because I've been tracking this, it's 7:29, there's still no decision. That's just moments ago. There's no decision. So, in, in order to continue this, they indicated they need a, a, a year, and the first two years for Henry County and the four cities was 6535, and then that seemed simple, that we would just continue it for one year, and two things happened. Number one is we would continue collecting the money. A second thing, if they have legislation in January that may affect it, then we may have to go back to the negotiating table anyway, or they may find out that we gave them too much paperwork, and, and the original 10-year may, may trump what we just done. But in any, in any event, we're gonna have all the paperwork that, whatever it ends up, we will have it, where we can continue the LOST. And I, I'm not sure about the cities, but the county's budget, obviously, our 75% is a significant amount. Just one penny for the LOST generates from 28 to 30 million dollars a year. So, that would substantially have a financial impact on Henry County and the cities as well. Now, my first thought, and the board's thoughts in, in discussion, individually, not as a group, individually, by phone and text and email, that the simplest thing to do would be approve a one-year contract, 6535, nobody gets hurt, the same it would be in a 10-year contract. And then we got to looking, and then we, we found out that, that one year was in two parts. And this is why we, we end up in two parts on the back. The first year that would be effective on January the 1st of 2013 through December 31st, okay, you got it, if you look right there, that's a percentages. Okay? So, if we just went one year, that would be from now until this time next year. But if you look at the agreement, the certificate of distribution, from January the 1st, 2014 to December 31st, that's some little change. Like, if you'll see this 8.42 for Hampton, the second year, well, through December, is 8.84. And then if you look at the, which is Locust Grove, 5.72, then they were getting 5.52. And it's just a minute change in there, but, and this resolution is drafted to be really more than a year, but it would be a end of this year and a full cycle for next year. And I feel comfortable that, uh, I mean, it is what it is. It's, if we do nothing, I, if somebody would, if, if the, somebody would tell me, like the, the Revenue Commissioner would say, "This is my interpretation," we would do something else. If the Attorney General would issue something in writing, then, then we would have something to rely upon. So, right now, I'm, I'm saying to give them all the documents, and at the end of the day, one is right and one is maybe not so right. So, you have a question?
Counsel, you know, I just have, Latonya, is, is there any risk with, just, because, you know, right now, I think the, the elephant in the room is, the federal government has got this great contentious debate going on, and they're running it up to the crisis moment. It almost seems on purpose. And, and, you know, and I don't want us to kind of mimic that when, when, I mean, we don't want to hurt the cities, and I don't think the cities want to hurt us. I mean, because we're all in this together, we're one Henry.
Yes.
But it seems like there's a lot of gray in this whole discussion, a lot. I mean, we can't, Latonya is not kidding with the fact that we've received at least four emails a day with all kind of updates and changes. Is there, what's the risk with essentially doing an extension until December 2014, under what we've already agreed to, the continuation of the 6535? Is there a risk? Because I had, I have received a call with saying, "Let's go ahead and do the 10 years," but I, I don't understand why we, explain that to me.
The, the 10-year deal, if you re-inked the 10-year deal with new certificates for 10 years, then obviously, the pros are, you know, you have it done, you don't have to worry about anything, and you have established your collections, distribution for the next 10 years. The cons are, you don't know what the General Assembly is going to do, what new parameters they may put in place in January. You, you just don't know. So, you really would be weighing the, the known versus the unknown, and it could work to the detriment of one party, and it could work to the benefit of the other. We just don't know. The reason that the one-year arran, timeframe was even discussed in the first place is that's what ACCG communicated to us that we need to do for the Department of Revenue's books last week and last Friday. There was another meeting today with the Department of Revenue, I understand, and we have yet to get the full, and that's the memo we're waiting on, with 7:30, so we don't know what the results of that are. If you do nothing, Commissioner, what we have presently is a distribution arrangement that was procured by way of a court order in a proceeding that the Supreme Court has said was unconstitutional in the first place. And so, the issue is, is that old distribution agreement, is it even valid? Is it tainted by the fact that it was procured in an unconstitutional process? Now, we, you know, lawyers have been having a field day in the past few days, are, you know, looking at whether it's void from inception, whether you can revive something that was never legitimate in the first place. And so, the unknown risk of doing nothing is too great. So, I do think at a minimum, we need to file something, and it's up to you all to decide whether you want to file just the one year or something greater, all the way to the 10 years, and that's y'all's decision to make. It will require, whatever we do, will require all of the cities to agree to what we're doing. And that's just the nature of that being, so I'm not, they have to sign off, as you'll see, there are signature lines for the mayors of each respective jurisdiction.
I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to get clarification on, because I know we're trying to, to get this figured out, so we don't run into this Thursday deadline, and, because it's, it's kind of all over the place. Is that, is that a threat that's being put out there? I mean, I know, I mean, I see some of the mayors and others. Is that the threat that if we don't do a 10-year, y'all will just go, let this thing go away? I mean, I'm curious. I mean, is, can we open this up for, for thoughts from?
I think we need to make a motion to accept comments from the public.
With, in, in bail, it's okay. I'd make that motion. I'd like, I mean, this is a very important issue.
I'll second. Have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, no? Okay, we're gonna hear comments from the mayors.
Can we do that over? You said all opposed or all for?
All, all in favor, opening the floor up, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay. So, we, we're, who we want to hear? Who wants to be heard? Mayor?
Yes.
From Locust Grove. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Come up to the podium, that way we can all hear you. Otherwise, well, we won't be able to hear you.
Mayor Price from Locust Grove, which I'm sure he's about to tell us, too.
Thank you. We've been in great discussion on this today, just like y'all have in the last week. We had a special call meeting in Locust Grove today to handle it. But what, what the city of Locust Grove wants, and other cities, I can't speak for, but I presume, is we want to keep it just like it is, like sign the declaration, approve the same percentage, same years for the entire thing. And the legal part, you have to give all the lawyers, I'm sure, but the city of Locust Grove wants to have the same percentages that y'all have up there right now for the whole duration of the 10 years to the next census. And I'm just speaking for the city of Locust Grove, and, but I presume that, and I think through our meeting today, that we all, the four cities agreed to go together.
Thank you so much. Just Mayor Price, so I understand. So, y'all saying if you don't get 10 years, we're gonna let this go away? Is that what I'm hearing?
Say that again.
If y'all don't, if we don't get a 10-year agreement,
Yes.
y'all just go let the 30 million dollars go away?
It's, it seemed like we had to make a decision.
Okay.
If, if we let it go to the next year, it changes. We go back to the negotiations again, and we felt like we, we negotiated all in true faith the last time we all reached a agreement, and we just trying to carry on the agreement we made the last one. Yes, so we voted to, uh, do whatever we ever had to do, but we voted to try to keep what we got right now.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman.
I was on the board at the time that the negotiations were going through. To be quite honest with you, I feel like we got short end of the stick.
Yes.
And if this means that we have an opportunity to go back and negotiate and get what we feel, you feel like, you know, you feel one way and we feel another, and that's the way it's supposed to work. But at the end of the day, we feel like, without having it shoved on us by the judge, not by the cities,
Yes.
but by the judge, and the way that it was shoved on us was really, you should've been in there, you know, but you wasn't. That if they come back and they make the decision to allow us to renegotiate, then we feel like we probably should, for the best of our citizens and the unincorporated, as well as in the cities, to bring it back.
Yes.
And I think we're prepared at this time, I know that several of us are prepared at this time, to vote on the resolution and send the resolution through, and whatever happens, happens.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just being honest with you.
I understand, I understand it perfectly. Only thing I'm saying is that when they stop collecting the penny, it's gonna cost the people of Locust Grove 10 meals.
Yes, sir.
And, and Hamptons, and, there's three cities that doesn't have a property tax.
Yes, sir.
We re, we roll back at, Locust Grove gets about a million seven, I think. We roll that right back to the people of the city of Locust Grove.
As we have to.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's, it's everybody, but, you know, I, like, like I said, I, we, at the time, felt like that we were not being treated fairly for the unincorporated, and we represent, but, I represent the city of Stockbridge,
I understand.
which is the largest one out there, and I'm probably making the mistake by speaking up, but that's just me, I do it. But at the end of the day, I feel like we should have an opportunity, without having the baseball arbitration, to have somebody hear all of the facts and not just say, "Well, you know, this is what you're gonna do, and that's the end of it." We don't, we don't feel like we were, really, we don't feel like we were heard properly, not by the cities, but by the judge that was appointed, who, for whatever reason, he did the way he did. did the way he did. But at the end of the day, you know, it may end up totally, you know, we may end up at the same spot, but if we go along and we say, we're gonna go with what we've got for the next 10 years, then we're stuck with that. We can't go back then, is my understanding, and that may all change tomorrow when they meet, and at the end of the day, they may say, no, you got what you got. But we want the opportunity, if that opportunity should arise, and I believe that the cities would want the same opportunity if they were on the side that we felt like we were on. If you had that opportunity to come back and say, oh, if it had went different, let's say it would have went, you know, 80, 20, just throw a number out there, and you had a chance to come back and say, oh, we want 35, you would probably be in the same position that we're in, just being fair.
Yes, I understand that, but also remember, we was up there and y'all was in the room, but we was all in the courthouse, and we had a judge from a different circuit coming here.
Yes.
And, and this was the ruling that we all agreed on that day.
That's right, but it's ruled unconstitutional the way it was done.
I understand that.
That's, that's why, I mean, you know, it's a point of law, it was ruled unconstitutional. So, we didn't like the way it went then, and now it's been ruled unconstitutional. So obviously, there's been others that didn't feel like they got the right, whether it be the cities or the county, you know.
But what I'm saying, if you was on our side, you'd still want the same thing, and obviously, our people are the same thing.
Oh, if I was standing where you are, I'd want it exactly like it, yes, that's exactly right, but I'm not.
I see, and I'm just, that's two sides.
Yes, I understand.
But like I say, we're gonna work it out, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
And we want to do what's fair, and the county wants to do what's fair, and I'm sure, but it's just the same point you made, it's the same point we got.
I agree with you 100 percent. If I was standing in your position, I'd say, oh, no, we want to keep it just like it is. I understand that.
My thing is, I mean, I really do, you know, Mayor Price, we've, I've sat in your living room, we've talked, I mean, I have tremendous respect for all you guys, and I want to take this, not, that whole process last year thrown out, it was, it is what it is, but what bothers me, and maybe this is because of the OCD of being an analytical CPA personality, is I see a lot of gray. I mean, we've got, nobody really knows what the rules are, where we are on any of this process, and I just, I can't stand what's going on in Washington, and I thought we were all in the understanding that this thing is so just discombobulated weird, why don't we just honor the obligation? We're willing to say, hey, look, let's, for the next year and three months, take this thing all the way through December 2014, not put the citizens through any crisis, let's just go ahead and, and agree to what we have, what the, what that judge had put out, even though we didn't agree with it, we're just gonna go with it because it's the right thing to do, so we don't put our citizens in a moment of crisis about the budget, and have to raise taxes and other things. And it does disappoint me to hear that, essentially, it's a threat that if we don't do this for 10 years, y'all just go let it go away, because that, that is kind of a threat, and that bothers me, because I don't buy cars when people say, you take this deal now or you leave. That bothers me when things are, take it or leave it, because I, I hope that we are all on a better page, because that's the politics that's dividing this country, and I, I don't know, I thought, because I even liked that Latonya, instead of doing a one-year agreement, said, guys, let's be reasonable and take this thing through December of 2014, you know, give them a few extra months while we're waiting to get the clarification. I'm a little surprised to hear that, and it disappoints me, it really does.
If you go back and looking, even city of Locust Grove, next year it does a little bit, then the next year it drops, you know. There was a lot went into all this, and everybody worked hard, and I'm sure we'll make something work, but we all, there's a lot more to do, and we just didn't want to go all back through six, seven more months of negotiating, meeting up here, meeting everywhere, meeting every Thursday night, that we just wanted to reach the agreement that the judge, and I understand y'all's position.
By the time they get through messing with it at the State House, probably nothing's gonna change anyway, so we're gonna be right back where we are. So I mean, at the end of the day, most of them up there don't have a clue.
Yes.
And you can tell them I said so if you see them.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else from a city? Yes, sir. Mr. Meeks.
And if I can say one, Mr. Meeks is coming up, for the benefit of the public, although we filed a petition in Henry County Superior Court, the law provided that a judge outside of this circuit had to hear the case. And I will tell, you all will remember, the three commissioners who were here at the time, we went months, because no judges wanted to hear this. And I think even sitting in the room, Commissioner Bowman, when we were in, when the commissioners were ordered to come to the courthouse by this, this judge, this visiting judge, the rub between the legislative branch and the judicial branch was evident in that room. And I think the Georgia Supreme Court got it right, I really do at the end of the day, and so I'm fortunate that we're here, but you can just feel the tension between the different branches of government in December when we were here, when we were there.
Thank you. Mr. Meeks.
Good evening, Marty Meeks, I'm a city councilman in Hampton, Honorable Chairman, Chairmen, or Council, Commissioners. It seems to me, I had some notes prepared, but most of that has already been discussed, we made an agreement. We, we debated for months, we talked, we researched, we brought up figures, I was involved in the process with Mr. Bowman and Mr. Holder, and we made an agreement. We signed the agreement, and we ought to stick to the agreement, is my personal opinion. If this case had not been brought up, we would still be abiding by the agreement. It almost seems like we're changing the rules in the middle of the game, and the agreement was made, we are the only municipality that's giving up funds. We're losing money for the next 10 years in this agreement. We haven't had our meeting, I'm speaking for myself, not for my city, we haven't, I'm not representing the mayor or the other council members, I'm speaking for myself. We will have our special call meeting in the morning, but I just wanted to share my opinion and my thoughts while I had the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else have any comment?
I just want one point of clarification, because it keeps getting brought up that we had an agreement. This is, and that's why we have Latonya up there, is that our county attorney, is because you see cases all the times where agreements are reached through a court, but then they go to appeal, and then they're overturned in, in the appeal process, and that's essentially what happened here with the Supreme Court, correct?
Well, what happened?
They ruled it unconstitutional.
Right, in the Turner County case, there was never an agreement, they stopped, the judge said, the judge that was in that case, that heard the case, denied the county's request and ruled in favor, undistribution arrangement that favored the cities. The county then appealed to the Supreme Court of Georgia, saying it was an unconstitutional process.
So if a court ruled, if a court ruled somebody owed somebody $30 million, but then it got thrown out for being unconstitutional, you wouldn't just still pay $30 million to, because of that court case? And I, and that's what, I think I would probably tell my feelings are hurt a little bit, because I think we're bigger as cities and counties than to bicker about this thing, and that's why I really think that us going a year and three months, and abiding by what was ruled an unconstitutional, shows a lot of good faith on the county side. And I hope that our, our brothers, you know, and sisters in the, in the cities will, will help, help us move this through.
And I wanted to speak to your comment, Commissioner Preston, when you said you were frustrated with all the gray area. I share your frustration, but I want to show you a part of the Supreme Court's opinion that addresses your concern, what you're saying. During the briefs, the parties asked the court, if you strike this down, Supreme Court, tell us what we need to do moving forward. Help us have a remedy moving forward, and you see what they said, it's not the role of courts to legislate alternative procedures to replace those promulgated by the General Assembly that are deemed to be unconstitutional. So the court declined to offer up a procedure, because they said that's not our job, and they're right, that's not their job. I think everyone wanted them to do that, so that we wouldn't be in this gray area that we're in, but it is what it is, and we're here, and we're trying to make the best of a very gray situation. Yes, sir.
Latonya, in reference to we all signed an agreement, that was very nice and very well spoken. We signed it because we were told we had no choice. The cities signed it because they wanted to sign it. We didn't sign it because we wanted to sign it. I think you can attest to the fact that we were told, this is the way it's gonna be, period, by the judge, didn't want to hear anything really we had to say, this was gonna be it. So when we signed it, it was out, it was, we signed it because we had to sign it, not because we wanted to sign it. So I just want to make that very clear.
And to be clear, y'all never signed anything, there was a, a final order that the judge issued, based upon that distribution arrangement, that he said, this is it, and we're gonna do it, and then...
Which has since been deemed unconstitutional.
Yes.
So, we were forced to sign something, a judge comes back and says it's unconstitutional. So I mean, at the end of the day, did we sign it willingly? No, we signed it because we had to. So I mean, there, I, there's a little difference between what was said, oh, we signed an agreement, so therefore, you know, we should stick to our end of the agreement. No, we signed it because we had to sign it.
And what came out last week, Commissioner Bowman, was that any county, in order, out of an abundance of caution, if you went through that baseball arbitration process, you need to get a new certificate in, because the presumption that everyone is operating under is that that process was invalid, and everything that occurred in that process is invalid.
Right, and to further clarify, had we reached an agreement without going to that, then we would not be able to do anything today.
That's right.
See, that, that makes, that's a good point, we would not be able to do anything had we not been forced to do it. We would not be even talking about it now. But we couldn't reach an agreement, that's why we had to go to baseball arbitration, which once again, deemed unconstitutional.
And there are some jurisdictions that never filed their certificate, the certificates were supposed to be filed by December 31st of last year. There are some counties in Georgia that did not do that, they're still in the midst of baseball arbitration right now, so they're in a real precarious situation.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? We have a resolution in the book, I'm not gonna read it, we just went over it, we hashed it over, and it's lengthy, but the bottom line is, the last two pages that were shown will be part of it. Does somebody want to move in that direction, or? We have a motion from District Four to approve the resolutions published. Have a second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, next we have a resolution question approval of an amendment to the FY 2014 agent sub grant contract with ARC. Ms. Reed. Good evening.
As you stated, I'm here to bring forth the First Amendment to the contract between Henry County and the Atlanta Regional Commission for the providing services to the senior adults of Henry County. Unfortunately, I am to report we have a reduction in our funding. The impact on our revenue budget is $46,402. And I have an explanation attached to the resolution, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
The reduction in funding?
We've been hearing rumors for quite some time, all the counties and the Atlanta Regional Commission, there's been talk that there would be reduction because of the federal funding that we receive, and it did come to pass. We were not hit as hard as some of our neighboring counties.
Is there reallocation of those funds, or?
It was pretty much reduction across the board.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book for consideration, Amendment Number One. They have a motion to approve from District Four. Second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Some move?
Thank you.
Next we have a resolution awarding a bid regarding landscaping along SR 138 and approving a budget amendment. Rocky Romero.
Good evening, Chairman and the board members. Serra 138 medium landscaping is a designated SPLUS III transportation project. Seal bits were solicited for the installation of the Serra 138 medium landscaping from Henry County line to I-75 southbound ramps. Five seal bits were received and reviewed. A budget amendment in the amount of $38,610.35 is needed to cover the landscaping and related costs. Funding for this budget amendment is available in the SPLUS III accounts of Hudson Bridge Road for $15,000, and Hemp Hill Road as Serra 138 for $23,610, I'm sorry, 23, yeah, $23,610.35. SPLUS recommends approval for a budget amendment in the amount of the $38,610.35, and approval of the low bidder award for the installation of the medium landscaping to be awarded to Precision Landscape Management in the amount of $57,610.35. I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any question?
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Preston, our District Two Commissioner, who had the Lake Spivey community before January of this year, so thank you for your contribution to this very important, important project. Also want to thank the citizens of the Lake Spivey community for being here, and want to ask Mr. Chairman if any of you would like to speak on behalf of this resolution, if it's okay if the Lake Spivey...
You got a motion?
I'm not gonna make a motion yet, basically, but I want to know if the citizens from Lake Spivey want a chance to speak on this particular resolution.
Well, if they do, we'd have to move to allow it, which we would do that.
Okay, so you need me to make a motion?
Now, we got some here that want to speak in the five-minute session, is that...
Well, I want to do it before the vote.
Okay, so do you move, we take a comment?
I want to make a motion that the Lake Spivey community...
Have a second. Any questions, any comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we taking...
I'd like to say something before we start the public comment section, can I add something to what?
Say what now?
Can I add something before the public jumps in?
Yeah.
I will tell you, especially, everybody's here is probably seeing, you know, government has its issues at some points, but Rocky called us up, and we had a, you know, a unique conversation about, you know, because it is, most people don't realize, we re-district every 10 years. So you might have District Two for this 10-year period, but then you turn into District Five in the future, and, you know, and we have money that kind of overlaps in these general areas. So Rocky called, and I was just very thankful that, you know, because we had talked about trying to come up with all the funds for this, to make this happen, because it's been talked about for years, and Commissioner Holmes has done a good job of finding the additional funds, because as you can see, SPLUS did not budget $57,000 in this thing. It budgeted approximately $15,000. So Commissioner Holmes did a really good job of getting creative and finding that additional money, and I just, I thought the process worked. I mean, it's nice actually, you know, especially when you see how much dysfunction, to see the process actually work on the collaborative side. So that's all I wanted to add.
And this is a very important gateway for Henry County, it's the first interchange that you reach when you get into our county. And, you know, Lake Spivey, I guess Clayton County, there's some beautification on their end, and when you look at the two planters on the Henry County side, it looks, it looks a mess. So this is something that desperately needs to get done, and again, I want to thank my good buddy here for his support.
Anybody like to be heard this time? We got Ms. Sally Davis. Are you Ms. Sally Davis?
I sure am.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I am Sally Davis, I live at 3303 Bayview Drive. I'm a Henry County resident, I brought my driver's license and my current, tax bill, if you want to see. I built my dream home on the, on a point overlooking the dam. It's been my pleasure and my responsibility to pay taxes for as long as I've lived on that property. I have never had a child in any Henry County school, but I consider that I am paying forward for the next generation, just like somebody paid for my child when she did go through the public schools in DeKalb County. So I pay generous taxes, I don't mind, but I would like for the support of the county to... I don't mind, but I would like for the support of the county to continue supporting our area, to keep our tax base up. If you let us down, you let the whole county down, because we do contribute a lot. And I'm thankful that you're considering this. And like you said, Clayton County did their part. I think Henry County is so much better and above and can do their part.
Anybody else like to be heard? Okay. Anybody else have any question? We have a motion, a correction. We have a S P L O S resolution to approve a budget amendment and to approve a bid award for SR 138 median landscaping. Does somebody move we approve it as published? Have a motion from District Five. Second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Next, we're going to have the Community Development Resolution Requesting Award of RFP for Consulting Services for the Preparation of the Analysis of Impediment to the Fair Housing Choices in Section Three Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Good evening.
Good evening.
After reviewing bids for the scope of work for the Analysis of Impediments, commonly known as the IA, and the Section Three Plan and other professional services to the CDBG program, the CDBG program does recommend Mullen and Lunigan Associates to conduct the research and prepare the county's first analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and the Section Three Plan. In summary, the AI is a comprehensive review of public policies, laws, and regulations that impact fair housing and affordable housing. Per federal regulations, recipients of HUD Community Development Formula Funds are required to conduct an AI within its first two years as a HUD entitlement community. The county's first year CDBG entitlement grant award was for fiscal year 2012. The county's fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. As of today, the county is in its second program year and is required to have submitted the AI prior to June 30th, 2014. The federal Section Three Plan requires that sub-receipients of HUD financial assistance, such as the CDBG program, provide job training, employment, contract opportunities for low and very low-income residents in connection with projects and activities in their neighborhood to the greatest extent possible. It is the recommendation of the CDBG program that the county contract with Mullen and Lunigan Associates at the cost of $25, excuse me, $25,000. That's $21,000 for the preparation of the Analysis of Impediments and $4,000 for the preparation of the Section Three Plan. In addition, the county did also receive amounts for annual action plan for 2014 and the CAEPER for 2013 and 2014. The county will have an option to utilize Mullen and Lunigan services for these documents if needed and if funding is available. There is current funding available in the CDBG budget to cover the $25,000 requested for the preparation of the IA and the Section Three Plan.
I only have one question.
Yes, sir.
Who would exercise these options? Would that, would that take Board approval?
Yes, sir. We will come back before the Board before making any move on that.
Anybody have any questions? Not, we have a resolution before you. If somebody would consider moving in that direction as best published? We have a motion from District Two. Second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you. Presentation, discussion of the creation of an ordinance to provide party procedure for reasonable accommodation. Ms. Matthews, good evening.
Good evening Chairman and Board members. This evening, I am bringing before the Board just a brief presentation, and I just kind of want to discuss it with you all and then bring it back for our November evening agenda, because it is quite a bit of information that we need to kind of take in. But wanted to make you all aware of a policy that we need to go or start looking towards implementing in our county ordinances. And I'll just briefly hit one or two points, and then again, I would like to bring this back in November for formal Board action. The federal fair housing amendments of 1988 prohibits local governments from impeding housing opportunities for peoples, people with disabilities through discriminatory land use and zoning decisions. What I have included in your package is a policy that I am proposing that we implement at the county level within our planning and zoning, building, and development departments. And what it will do is create a policy for individuals who may not meet the requirements of our county code due to disabilities that they may have. And what they will actually ask each individual department to do is to relax some of the provisions that we currently have on the books. There's a very lengthy discussion in your exhibit package. There's also an application. There's also a policy if your application is denied, which you can file an appeal. But again, I am not asking you all to make a decision tonight just to review the information. And then staff will certainly meet with you all individually, three-on-three, or if you all want to bring it back for discussion, again, I certainly can do that. But I do want you all to have an opportunity to review the information and ask any and all questions that you all may deem necessary. So again, tonight is just for informational purposes and I will bring it back in November.
Anybody else have any comment? Yes, sir.
I think maybe the three-on-three, because it's 14 pages and I've tried to read most of it, but I do have some concerns and questions, and some probably relate to the business license portion as being a business license and the portion on whether or not do we, do we, do we overlook any homeowners associations as far as businesses allowed in there? Got a lot of questions I'd like to see us clear up, so Mr. Chair, I think three-on-three before this comes back would be very appropriate. I concur with you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, you know, I had a chance to talk to my appointee to the zoning advisory board, and this is a hard issue, because, I mean, you can, reading what's come down from the government on this, and then also, you want to do the right thing. I mean, it really is. And I know we've, Chair, I've told you, I wanted to have a sit-down with you, and then you've even been in communication with some of the people who've written me correspondence. Have we got, because it seems like a sticking point that I heard last year, and it seems to be coming up again, is this own versus rent and some other issues. Can we, before we do the three-on-threes, I'd even like staff to get with, because it seems like, you know, there's a group of about 10 people I know we seem to have in these discussions with on a constant basis in the community, and I know they have a lot of insight that they could provide. And not that we're going to come up with something that everybody loves, but it's definitely, I'd like to get some collaboration from, you know, some of our citizens who have a passion for this. I know we've tried to do that in the past. Is that something we can do before we do the three-on-threes, too?
Absolutely. Staff will certainly be more inclined to meet with whomever we need to meet with. We already have language available that we can bring back to the Board if we need to tweak it, but we certainly do recognize that it is a sensitive subject matter. And we want to make sure that we aren't creating ordinances that are prohibiting certain individuals from being able to have personal care homes and reside within personal care homes.
I know it wasn't the exact same issue as this, this mandate that's come down, but it probably could go back to some of the discussions from last year. You know how we do planning and zoning meetings, the minutes are listed and there's questions about the impacts here, and it really provides a good narrative for us Commissioners to understand the issues. I know we could probably, and maybe even some of the citizens who have a concern about this, they could tell us their 10 main problems with maybe our policy as it exists, and then we as the staff could then go and address those 10 issues, you know, and the county's current position and our thoughts for the future, that would help us tremendously for the three-and-three, I think, you know, just to make sure we're informed to do the right decision.
Absolutely. And if any of the Commissioners have received email correspondence from individuals, please forward that information on to me so that I can make sure that I do tap into those individuals when we're coming up with anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a public hearing. Tim Jones of Atlanta, Georgia requests a modification, MC-13-05, to zoning conditions for the Henry Market Place Development located at intersection of Jonesboro Road and Town Center Village Drive and Land Lot 110 and 115 of the six districts. The request, requested modification is regarding permitted land use and associated acreage. The subject property is located within Commission District Two presented Jeremy Gimick planning and zoning.
Good evening Chairman and Board members. The request that is before you tonight is a modification to two zoning conditions. To kind of give you a little history behind this property, the property was originally rezoned in 1997. In 1997, there was 33 zoning conditions placed on the property. Property was then reheard in March of 1999 where it was approved with 25 zoning conditions. It then went to the Superior Court and threw consent order in July of 2000, in January of 2000, was rezoned by the Board, and then it came back again in May of 2001. At that time, it had 28 zoning conditions. A modification was then heard in 2005 to modify three zoning conditions. Tonight, the request that is before you is to take two of those zoning conditions, condition number six and condition number seven. Condition number six states that 26.9 acres on the east boundary of the property line of the above-mentioned C2 property will be zoned C3. And then condition number seven says the remaining 35.35 acres of the property which is located along the southern property line will be zoned RM under the RM densities and provisions in effect as of March 31st, 1997. And then an undisturbed buffer of 20 foot shall be located on the southern property line where the RM abuts, property is zoned for single-family. What I have that's on the overhead for the Board and for the public tonight is, this was the master development plan that was approved for this planned development. The property is zone plan development, and under each one of these designations has a separate zoning underlying for that pod. What is being requested now is through these zoning conditions would change some of the boundaries of these pods. And the next map I'm going to show you is the new proposed modifications to this master The areas that you see here as parcel A and parcel B that are hatched currently are designated on the master development plan as C3 highway commercial development. What the applicant is asking in his modification to these conditions would for condition number six to be changed to read that 10.89 acres on the east boundary line of the property south of the mentioned C2 property be zoned C3, and then that the remaining 51.44 acres of the property be located, located on the south property line be zoned RM. The maximum number of units to not exceed 540 units, and then keeping the undisturbed buffer. Currently, there are 300 units on the 35.35 acres of land, and the applicant is requesting an additional 240 apartment units on what would be, if the Board saw fit to change this, the new 51.44 acres of multifamily. Staff has evaluated this request and does not make a recommendation, but in your books, we do have two resolutions. One resolution for approval, one resolution for denial. The denial approval, the denial resolution is a little different than a normal resolution that we have presented before the Board before, because it does still list 28 zoning conditions in it. And the reason why we did this is because all of the rezonings in 97, 99, 2000, 2001, the zoning conditions got really jumbled, and during the modifications, none of those conditions were ever reaffirmed. So we want to make sure that we clear this up, that when a developer comes in or when an applicant comes in, we can give them one resolution with every condition that's pertaining to all of this property. So we have included in that denial of this request resolution to reaffirm all of those conditions that were previously approved by the Board. Will answer any questions that you have on this matter?
I don't have any. Anybody have any?
I'd like to defer that until we get to the public forum, because I know that we have?
Yes, it's a public hearing. Yes. Next, I want to ask that the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to present. Yes, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Doug Dillard with Wiser Noack, Curran, Wilco, represent the applicant, Mr. Jones, and the Adler Properties. We, this property, you probably know, I know, Mr. Bowman knows, that this property's had quite a history relative to litigation over the years that we began in 1997. We're here to ask that, that two of the conditions be modified in order that we can add 240 residential units. The problem that we've had with the property is that as we have gone through the recession and depression, or whatever you want to call it, the commercial opportunities have not been fulfilled. We've developed a subdivision to the east. We've developed 300 residential units. We've developed some limited commercial. The commercial just is located in the interior of the property, and it just doesn't have a market. We've tried to market it. We've tried to sell it. Can't, can't do it. So what we're asking is that we transfer 16.09 acres to give us an opportunity to add 240 additional residential units. We urge that it does not destroy the mixed-use environment that's on this property. It's been developed with single-family detached, multifamily attaxed, and commercial. And as we, as we look at its proximity to, to the roadways in the area, we think that it is consistent with your overall comprehensive plan, even though the densities are a little bit off. It is consistent with, with your overall residential densities as called by your comprehensive plan. It confirms that there is a market for the mixed use. It's just that the balance of commercial versus residential is, is not there. I assume that you're going to have some testimony from the public tonight about, about traffic. We would submit to you that a traffic report will show that the overall density of commercial at C3 will generate more trips per day than the additional 240 units. You're looking at somewhere between four and six units per day per unit. And when you look at commercial densities, you're looking at four to 5,000 parking, four to five parking spaces per thousand, you're looking at probably pushing a quarter million, quarter million square feet of, of retail, assuming there was a market for it. And it would generate, it would generate AM and PM peak traffic that would be far more severe than what we're talking about for the residential. Also, we have given you a letter today outlining our constitutional notice. I have given one to Ms. Mathis and to Latonya. I think each of you have also a copy of it in your record. I'd like for it to be made a part of the record for any appeal that might be required. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve whatever remaining time I have for rebuttal. I do have representatives of the Davis Development Company here who would be prepared to answer any questions that you have about the type, quality of the, of the residential development and any other questions that you might have regarding this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone here? This is a public hearing, a constitutional public hearing. Do we have anybody that'd like to address this governing body for the proposed? In the event we have anyone that wants to speak, oppose this, you will have 15 minutes as a group. And what that means is, one person can talk 15 minutes, or you can have 15 people to talk for one minute. So having said that, if you would be so kind enough to come to the podium, state your name and address, and let me reset it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Paul Leslie. I reside at 1721 Highway 81 West, McDonough, Georgia, the pastor of McDonough Christian Church, 2000 Jonesboro Road, which is at the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Mount Olive. I applaud Mr. Jones on what he paid to have representation here tonight, but what we have is a representation of the community. And for this Board to entertain a variance at this time, the traffic situation on Jonesboro Road, there's no way we can put more people on Jonesboro Road with a multifamily situation. The roads don't accommodate the current traffic. And it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this And it, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this developer previously on the development south of Jonesboro Road, one of the stipulations was a red light to be placed at, at Jonesboro and Mount Olive Road. Ironically, there was a long delay until Jonesboro Road became temporary state route, route nine twenty, at which time the county lost some of its jurisdiction and it had to meet state mandates and it had to be, qualify according to state conditions. At that time, it did not warrant a red light. Ironically, there still is not a red light there. The state proposal is not until twenty twenty. And so I represent a church and a community and a citizen of that district that say, I'm very concerned that our infrastructure could not, could not withstand increased development at this level. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard in opposition of it? Does anybody like to be heard in favor of it? Did you want to be in opposition? Ma'am? Okay, if you would, come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Angela Malcolm, sixty-five, Chambers Road, McDonough. I guess I oppose because when I read the SPOSH projects, I was reading where to put red lights, where not to put red lights or road condition or intersection improvements. And I was concerned this also because of the traffic at Jonesboro Road. I do attend church there, but I'm also a business, in that area as a business owner also. But the main problem is, is you'd want, you want to put a red light at Chambers and Mount Carmel and spend that kind of money when only that intersection is backed up on Sunday due to the higher living members from that church. And in the last year and a half, they've figured alternative routes to avoid Mount Carmel and Chambers. The only backup is from Hampton to that intersection. The other three areas at that stop sign are not affected by the traffic. And to spend over two million dollars for a red light there and not put it at an intersection that is well-needed because anybody that travels Jonesboro Road on any given day except, and plus when we have all the soccer tournaments in town and baseball tournaments in town Saturday and Sunday, the intersection, you can sit on Jonesboro Road for thirty minutes and go two miles. And I just would like the board and the commissioners to look at definitely the rezoning issues in this area, but also traffic lights designated in the proper areas. And I do agree with the traffic lights in the areas of like, you know, you've got Hampton Lucas Grove Road and Simpson's Mill, that's definitely needed. But reevaluate what buildings go where and what traffic lights go where because this county, in my opinion, has gone out of hand in that area where it's not, they say a quiet town south of McDonough, it's our, south of Henry County of Atlanta, it's not. I want us to get it back to controlling what goes where and where red lights go for the safety and I have two teenage drivers that this would affect. So, thank you.
We have anybody else that'd like to speak in opposition? If not, I'm going to reset the clock for fifteen minutes. Do we have anybody that would like to speak in favor of this? And the same rule applies, you have fifteen minutes as a total.
We're not going to take that much time, Mr. Chairman. We won't take that much time, I promise you.
Okay.
But, but let me do.
If you're going to be as an applicant, you've got eleven minutes and seventeen seconds.
Well, I just, I assumed I would reserve my remaining time for rebuttal.
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so you've got eleven minutes and seventeen seconds.
That's plenty of time.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to add, this is Mr. Joe, Ms. Tim Jones. You don't get eighteen to thirty-three conditions on a zoning without being willing to sort of work with folks to try to make a development work the way it ought to work. And over the years, we've, we've had anywhere from eighteen to thirty-three conditions on this property as we have tried to work through the process to give Mr. Jones an opportunity to develop the property. Traffic has always been an issue. We've taught, we've been willing to do our part relative to it, but I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Jones to sort of tell you exactly what the situation has been relative to red light because it has been, it has been an issue out there.
Just to give y'all a little bit of history on it, you know, we got this thing rezoned, I believe, for the apartments, commercial back in oh-five. And we had this thing pretty well laid out and LOI letters of intent, commitments on the entire piece of property for retail, commercial retail. Well, as y'all know, when the Great Recession started in oh-seven, only one major anchor signed up and went on the site and that was Ashley Furniture. Well, we've had the Sembler and Fuquay, two of the biggest retailers that I'd partnered with to try and get other tenants on this property for past six years. And we just haven't really had much interest. We got one box with an LOI. If you look where it's just future retail, they don't want to sit way back off the road, but they will go up there closer to the road. So what that's done is created a void between that and the other apartments because you can't put retail behind retail behind retail. And it is my advantage to go in there and, and do this thing, the retail development, unfortunately, there's just, there's not a market for it at this time. And it's addressing the preacher and the red light. I mean, when we started development and Jonesboro Road, I got with him, I think you remember, I notified him when they were, the state had originally designed this to not let the church have any access to Jonesboro Road. And I went, we went and met with the DOT, got that changed, then I went and, we tried to put in a red light. We did all the traffic studies, met with the DOT, they kept turning us down. I got with, I think it was Chairman Harper back then, commissioners trying to get the state to allow a red light. You know, it's not a county thing, the county would have loved to have the red light. We were going to pay for it and put up a red light, but they unfortunately denied it. And this isn't something that, you know, we came up with just because it was a moneymaker. This is not a moneymaker selling this piece of property for apartments. But it does cause less traffic and it will have a buffer in between what the commercial we can add. And it will be a significant increase in the tax base by having these apartments. And these aren't three, four-story apartments, they're luxury apartments. The majority of them will have garages and they'll be developed by a local developer and they'll be pretty much same quality that's behind them, which has been a very successful apartment development. And I think with that, you know, it's just, there's not really much other, other use for the property. And that's why we would like to hopefully get this changed where we can develop the property. If y'all have any questions.
One, one, one part of comment. The Georgia law is pretty clear that you can't deny zoning just because of increased traffic. The law indicates that if you go in and rezon property, you're probably going to generate additional traffic. But the Victoria Corporation case was handed down by the Supreme Court in nineteen sixty-one and the cases that followed that, Flynn versus DeKalb County and others, have said you can't deny zoning just because of traffic, particularly in this situation where we have really tried so hard to, to try to provide a red light inadequate, adequate access for the church in the, in the surrounding, surrounding area. And this proposed use, your DOT folks will confirm, this proposed use will generate fewer trips per day than to develop that thirty-five acres for, for commercials. So we would ask that you favorably recommend the modification. It's pretty simple. It's two conditions, six and seven, off of the, off of the oh-five conditions that were carried over from ninety-seven, two thousand, what, however many there were, Jeremy, there were several, but, but we intend to comply with all the other conditions. We're just asking that we take sixteen point oh-nine acres from C-three and add it to the thirty-five acres of the RM, which is already developed with three hundred units, gives additional twenty-four units, will let the remaining ten acres stay C-three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant or staff?
I just want to point a clear case and ask. Doug, while I followed this, I wasn't on the board at the time all that went through.
Yeah, you were.
I was, I bet I was following it because there was a lot of, there was a lot of legal issues that surrounded it. So anyway, I wanted to make sure that we cleared up that. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Yes, sir, District Two.
First one to come in, Mr. Jones, because he, he took the time to have a personal meeting with me about this to, to kind of see if I had any thoughts, concerns, discussions. And, and that's a good thing. I mean, I also, we have Steve Cash here in the audience from the Council for Quality Growth. We've got the Chamber of Commerce here with David Gill. And I'm all about trying to get Henry County growing for good. And, and it really is, and we're going to have a win for Mr. Jones in the future. But I did have three concerns and it wasn't just about the traffic, was, you know, we have a, a future land use map and, and as a request in this proposal, this is incompatible with that future land use map. You know, the, the traffic congestion is somewhat of a concern, it's not the primary concern. And then number three, the apartments as proposed go against the, the development master plan that was, that was originally the intent for this property. And, and that gives me pause as well. So with that, I would, if there's no other questions, I, I'm going to have to make the motion to deny this request.
There are motion from District Two to the accept the resolution denying the modification to the zoning conditions requested to Tim Jones for the properties located within Henry Marketplace Development at the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Town Center Drive and Land Lot one-ten and one-one-five of the sixth district. Second. Have a second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Moving down to the approval of the minutes, June the fourth, twenty thirteen. If no one has any amendments, I'm going to read June the, four, twenty thirteen, June the eighteenth, twenty thirteen, July the second, twenty thirteen. If there's no amendments to either one, I would accept the approval to approve those three dates, the minutes. Now, motion from District One? I'm sorry. Second from District? Four. Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, public comments. Reverend Leslie, you down for, for five minutes? If you come, state, come, state your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Paul Leslie, McDonough Christian Church, reside at seventeen twenty-one Highway eighty-one West. Mr. Chairman and Board, I want to make sure you understand why I'm here tonight. First is a concern over the intersection of Jonesboro Road, Mount Olive and Town Center Village Drive. That intersection is long past due for improvement. The state is, is scheduled for a twenty-twenty visit of that situation. We feel like that's far too far in the future. Secondly, after evaluation, evaluation of the SPOSH four recommendation, we're greatly concerned about the lack of dollars and the attention that Mount Olive Road is slated to receive, especially when it was a vital part of the T-SPOSH proposal last year. In May of nineteen eighty-eight, there was a gathering of folks in the basement of Ray and Jenny Frisell's home, Tim, I wish you would have stayed, brother, in the basement of Ray and Jenny Frisell's home, a dirt road at the time. I don't believe there were strip centers at the time for churches to meet in. This was the first worship service of McDonough Christian Church. In nineteen eighty-eight, land was purchased at the corner of Jonesboro and Mount Olive Road, approximately six-tenth of an acre, a six-tenths of a mile west of I-75. The first building was dedicated in April of nineteen ninety-one. Our directions were simple at that time. Exit I-75, turn west where the first thing you come to. My, how things have changed. We have grown with the county and we continue to serve our county and this community. We've never fought growth. We've only been before this board previously for a couple of things. One, for a petition for curb cuts on Mount Olive to access our property and to ask the board not to vary from established ordinances. Our presence speaks for itself. We need your help. We need to work together to get resolved. Waiting until twenty twenty for a signal at Jonesboro Road and Mount Olive seems unrealistic with the continued growth. Right now, there are talks of three more retailers moving into the old BJ's big box space. The county cannot generate a signal, but can put up signs restricting through traffic going west on Jonesboro Road. The result, as late as yesterday morning, when I asked a driver of an eighteen-wheeler who had turned around in our parking lot, why? He said because of that sign, pointing to the one on Jonesboro Road in front of the old BJ's. My understanding is that Jonesboro Road is not built to handle heavy weight of the trucks. I'm sure that our parking lot is even less capable. In the last traffic study indicating the red light was not warranted, one of the factors was that there were only four right-angle wrecks and there needed to be five. The irony, the people of McDonough Christian Church paid an off-duty officer to work that intersection, keeping it not only safe for our folks, but the citizens and the visitors to our county. In all likelihood, an accident was prevented, but we had no idea that we were working against a signal being placed. While we realize that a traffic signal is not a fix-all, it would at least allow regulated entrance on the Jonesboro Road so drivers did not fear for their lives. How many of you present tonight have entered private property, the Henry Town Center, for the sole purpose of entering Jonesboro Road at a signaled intersection? Thank you. Board of Commissioners, we need your help. Secondly, the only alternative to Jonesboro Road for our people and the many shoppers of the Henry County, Henry Town Center remains dirt. Last year, Mount Olive Road was on the T-SPOSH proposal with, with the Atlanta Regional Commission as a parkway. The SPOSH four has eighty-five thousand dollars slated for surface treatment or paving. At the same time, a million dollars is proposed with intersection improvements at Chambers and Mount Carmel. That may be good in the future, but Mount Olive needs attention now. You may pass the responsibility on to the state for a traffic signal, but the Mount Olive improvements are at your discretion. Again, we need your help. Often, people comment on our great location. While we do have great visibility and accessibility, our accessibility has diminished greatly with the development on Jonesboro Road. Mount Olive could and should be an excellent alternative, especially with the improvements to Jodeco Road and the bridge widening. Again, we need your help. We are here to ask for your help and considerations. As a leader, I know there are days when you feel like you can't please anybody. Your representation and service to our community is greatly appreciated. We come in peace, but we come with a purpose. We need your help. And right now, I want to defer the remaining time that I have to the Lord. Let us pray. Father God, we come tonight and I pray for each one of these commissioners and I pray for our national leadership as well, that we could come together as a nation and we can move forward. Father, I thank you for Chairman Smith. I thank you for Brian Preston and his representation. I, I thank you for Bruce Holmes and the great work that he does and for Gary, for Bo and the many things that these guys sacrifice in order to make this a great community. And Father, I think about Reed. I think about Reed as a fighter and I think about how Commissioner Bowman has served this community so well. And I pray that in the spirit that he fights, that we would fight, but we would fight together for the good of this community, for the protection of the citizens, that this can be a safe place, an incredible place to live, an incredible place to make a difference. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us. Bless this commit, Board of Commissioners. Bless this nation and bless this great county of, of Henry County, Georgia. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Is there other people that, I mean, I'd like to.
Sure.
Can I say a few words?
Yes.
First, Pastor, I want to thank you. I know we've had several conversations and just behind the scenes, kind of, Bruce leans over to me and he goes, "All these people in red here for you?" And I said, "Yes." But I welcome that because one of the things that I've had the opportunity, y'all have done a good job of trying to reach out to us, you know, and I've made sure I've copied the chairman on it as well as DOT, that y'all have these concerns. And believe me, that SPOSH list was not an easy thing to put together and, as a community. I wanted to challenge you guys also, and I've shared this with a few of your members who have written us, is that y'all, I actually welcome y'all coming because I, I think that this is the way the process is supposed to work. You come, you let it be known. We're going to do our part and I know, you know, Chairman Smith, one of the, the biggest talents I see out of him is that, you know, because he worked for the county in the past on kind of getting stuff done. You know, if commissioners had issues, he would get, be the guy who would kind of reach fulfillment and was incredible at it. And I even see that as the chairman, he, he's done a good job of, sometimes constituents will reach out and he finds a unique way to get things done. And I know we can get together as well as collaborate with the other commissioners. together as well as collaborate with the other commissioners, and hopefully find something, some unique way to help you before 2020. But I want to also give y'all the, reach out to GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, because they need to hear your voices as well. We have requested a traffic study, and maybe Terry can speak to that a little bit more, what that entails. But, and Terry, tell me if I don't need to do this, but I had two names that were shared with me that were from GDOT, from the Thomaston District. Is that okay if I share those two names and then the phone number?
I think we've communicated them through email, so I don't know if there'd be much difference.
Is there a negative to sharing that to the public, those two numbers? I mean, those names and numbers?
Yeah, it would be no different than air in mind, so.
Okay, okay.
I would say, go ahead.
Our two, there are two contacts with the Thomaston District is Michael Presley and Scott Parker. And their phone number at the main office is 706-646-6900. Now, realize we televise this, so y'all can go back and pull those numbers down. But, I mean, I think the citizen body is the most powerful when y'all unite and do this, and your voice can be heard, and maybe we can get something done, so.
Well, we are not against growth. We've embraced growth, and the only reason we're here is because it can't, it's gridlocked now, and it's unsafe. And I appreciate Terry and the local DOT, and we have had communication with Thomaston, and talked to Senator Jeffries today as well, and he's aware of the situation. And we just want to work together for good resolve and for protection. We have had a fatality in front of our church, not a result of that intersection.
Right.
But we have been through that. And it's a dangerous thing. The tractor-trailers do come and go, and that's another thing. We're open for suggestions on that. You know, when the county puts up signs, that's great, but then that driver doesn't want to affect the CDL, he'll use our parking lot.
Didn't we put that sign up, Terry, or is that a state thing? I mean, maybe you need more time to go look at it. That's something maybe y'all could get together.
Well, the sign needs to be there. Jonesboro Road itself is not a truck route.
Right.
So, you know, if you don't have, then no truck signs up, then our agencies can't enforce that at all. That doesn't mean there won't be any trucks on the road. You know, if a truck has appointed delivery on the road, he's got to be there. But it's like they can't use Jonesboro Road to cut through from I-75, say, to Jonesboro, something like that.
Right.
So, it's a very warranted sign.
But just like yesterday, that driver had to turn around because he saw that sign. And there's no place to turn around. And we've had six-by-six posts on either side of our drive, trying to keep them within the drive. They're knocked over. And we don't like gates and chains, because that says, that's not a welcoming church. You know, we're not about that. We're about embracing the community. All those apartments would be great, because that's parishioners for us. But we can't get people to and from currently. So Terry's doing a good job on his end.
Well, maybe there's the communication afterwards that y'all can have about the location of that sign. There's nothing wrong with having the sign there, but if the only curb cut is right by them, right by that sign, it's probably encouraging, you know, people to turn around in their parking lot. So maybe there's an alternative to the placement of it. I don't know. I'm just talking out loud here, but maybe y'all can talk about that.
But the red shirts are here, Mr. Chairman, because we need to work together, and we willing to do what we can. And 2020 is a long way off. And the funnel of traffic already from McDonough four-lane narrowing down to a two-lane in front of our church, 2017, 2018, when they get it four-lane to over 21941, that's going to funnel more traffic into a narrower space. We're the last piece of that connector between I-75 and I-85. And if y'all have some suggestions, we're open to it, and we're willing to partner for the good of this community. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bill Tony. Take your name and address to the record, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough.
There you go. It's just a penny. Your SPOLOSH is just a penny. If it's just a penny, your problems are over. There it is. Pennies add up to dollars. Seventeen trillion dollars starts with one penny. Right now, I feel like that, because of so much waste and everything in the previous administration, that we need to take a break from the SPOLOSH. This is my opinion, my opinion only. I don't particularly have a problem with SPOLOSH, as long as it's handled properly. But when you are over $200 million in the hole, you got a problem. You've overdone, or you've messed up somewhere. We've got six years of this thing ahead of us if we vote yes. I suggest, in my opinion, I'm voting no. All right, you've got, you've got people saying it's a continuation of a tax. That's not true. This is a brand-new tax. When SPOLOSH three ends, this is a brand-new tax that's coming before you. I got to looking at SPOLOSH, and all the things, you get some good out of it, you get a lot, you get a lot of bad out of it. You got pet projects, you got good stuff. Right now, I think we need to maybe take a break in the SPOLOSH, and just see, let's start getting this thing reeled in. I also looked at impact fees, and I was really, really surprised on that one. Forty-three point one-five percent of your impact fees that y'all are putting on business and residents, forty-three point one-five are going to parks and recreation. Almost 3% administrative, 1.8, 1.18 green space, 10% libraries. Only 8.3% goes to the police department, which I think is, I'd say, a lot more, a lot more important to keep you safe. All right, what it really got to me, you think about the impact fee, being money coming into the county for the impact of the business or the residents. 0%, 0% went to roads or any kind of infrastructure that I could find. So I'm disappointed that we hadn't made good use of our SPOLOSH before. And hopefully, if, like I said, if a penny will solve your problems, your problem solved. Thank you very much.
It's a weird dichotomy, because, you know, District Two, because you made the comment of pet projects and good projects. I want to get some specifics in District Two, because, you know, my appointee, one of the appointees I had for District Two was your brother, and he did a really good job of setting up, and, you know, the projects I see is, you know, two fire stations in our district, you know, lots of resurfacing and transportation. Tell me what our pet projects were, and which ones were the good...
We've got a riding arena here on 81, not necessarily in yours.
But focus on District Two, just because I don't want to get into an emotional thing since I'm the one asking.
If you want to give me time to prepare for a debate or a forum on this, if you want to give me time, I'll come back with you. Let me get, let me get mine together. You're hitting me with stuff that I could ask you the same questions, and you might not be prepared for. But if you, if you give me a list of questions, what you think that I should answer for you, I'll be more than happy to do it for you, Brian.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. David Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and the county employees here, and remain in public. I'll be fairly brief. I know it's getting late. I want to do three things here quickly. One is to thank you for your foresight in adopting a resolution supporting the interchange on I-75. I think that's a public safety, a transportation, a quality of life issue that we have to address. I applaud you for including it in the SPOLOSH. I've talked with the governor. I've talked with Commissioner Golden. I've talked with the board members of Greta and Serta. All of them have said that the county's willingness to be involved in this and support for it are critical to getting that project underway, and I applaud that. But I also want to take just a moment and talk about lost, because that came up tonight. And as, as, I'm sorry, and I'm David Gill, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, 1709 Highway 20 West. From the Chamber of Commerce, I would encourage you, I don't have a position as to whether the county's right, or the cities are right with regard to the split. And I can absolutely understand if you feel like the judges or the judiciary imposed on you a split that's inappropriate. But from a business perspective, I encourage you to find a solution with the counties. Commissioner Preston, I think, was right. We don't need a mini occurrence of what's going on in Congress. But I want to point out two or three things of impacts that you may not have considered. Mayor Price was right for the city. It's a revenue issue, but it's a revenue issue only in the form in which it's collected. The city of Locust Grove will get the same amount of revenue. They will simply have to do it with an ad valorem tax instead of a sales tax. The county will get the same amount of revenue. You'll have to do it by an increase in ad valorem tax, with one exception. Those travelers to our community who are not residents of Henry County will not be paying that tax. So we have a collection issue. We are going to miss a lot of collection if the revenue department does not collect that tax on behalf of the county. Second thing, my members are merchants, and they collect a 7% tax right now. And if Thursday afternoon, they're told, "You have to collect 6%," we have no way to accommodate that kind of change to our equipment. So we're in for a massive undertaking. We're in for a massive amount of confusion. We're in for a massive problem at the retail level to try to collect a sales tax that is not collectible, and is not a legitimate sales tax from the city or the county to collect. And the third thing, there is a competitive issue in Henry County. For those of you who are not aware of it, if you take our warehouse space that exceeds 10,000 square feet, 62% of it is currently vacant. One of the major impediments to the leasing of that, aside from traffic congestion, which we know about, is the ad valorem tax level in Henry County. If you roll back this lost, if we have to increase the ad valorem tax to replace this lost sales tax, we are simply making Henry County less competitive, and we're going to eliminate jobs and eliminate the possibility for future jobs. The final thing is, we need confidence in our government. As a citizen, as a representative of the business community, I'm going to say, we encourage you and the cities to find common cause. I ask you not to allow this to go to the point where we say, "We're willing to hold our position to the point where we don't collect the tax at all." I hope you'll find that not to be an option. I hope you'll find the cities and you can find common cause. And I encourage you, I know you've adopted your resolution, and as I said, I'm not particularly exercised over the split. I think that has to be a fair negotiation between the city and county. I have members who are in the cities, and I have members who are also in the unincorporated portions. But what I will encourage you to do is to do whatever you have to do to be able to adopt a fair resolution timely, so that this burden does not fall on the citizens of this county unfairly. I don't envy you your job. It's tough, but that's what you were hired to do. When you put yourself forth for public service, and I applaud you for that, I encourage you to find that solution. I think that the county and the cities will be far better off once you do. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be glad to address questions if you have them. But I just encourage you to find that opportunity, and not back yourselves in any corners.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your comments. I really do. I would hope that you would deliver that same message the same way you delivered it to us, to the cities.
I wish they were here, and I would be happy to, but I will certainly take the opportunity to do that, because I think this is critical for our members and for the operation of their businesses.
I mean, all we're, all we're asking for, for those in that are watching this on TV, we're just asking to take a look at it, that it's 13, well, it's 12, 13, 14, 15 months that we continue the way we're going for 15 months, and have an opportunity to take a look at it and see which way the legislature comes down on it. I don't think that's, I don't really think that's too unfair to ask the cities to do.
Commissioner Bowman, I agree that there is a fairness issue here at the end of it. My concern is that by sticking from the city's perspective or the county's perspective, I hope we will not take the opportunity not to resolve it. And I would encourage the cities to be as earnest in their negotiations as I encourage you to, because the people who are going to pay the price for this if it's not resolved.
It's all of us.
It's everyone.
It's all of us.
And no one wins in this.
That's right. I understand.
If it doesn't get resolved.
Really was.
And I would encourage them. I wish they were here, because I think that, I know all of you. I have great confidence in your ability, your characters, and your reasonableness. I feel like if you and the mayors can sit down and talk, you can find a resolution for this. I just want to say, from my perspective, representing the business community, it's critical that it be done. And I appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir. No, thank you. I appreciate yours, too. I just wanted to clarify it for the public, that it's not just us, that we're trying to have a 15-month looksee, which should be plenty of time for the state to decide which direction you had to go, because we did have to sign it basically under duress. You know, we were told, "Sign it or else." So, you know, so, I mean, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to rehash that. I think we talked about it enough earlier. But at the end of the day, you know, 15 months for us to have an opportunity for us to see what was made, put on us, was unconstitutional. So we should have that opportunity to at least look at it. That's all I'm asking for.
And I have no response to that.
All right.
I really don't. That's not the issue for me. The issue for me is, whether it's 15 months, five years, seven years, or 10 years, I would encourage you to find a way to get that resolved because of the impact on us. I hope you'll take that into consideration in your thinking as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Does Miss Angela Malcolm like to be heard again?
Mr. Chairman.
I know she's spoken once.
She's already gone.
Sally Davis, I know she spoke once. Would she like to be heard again, because she's on the...
She left.
Okay. Has any of the Commissioners liked to make a comment now for any reason?
I don't know.
Yes, sir?
I actually have a fun thing. And after a heavy meeting, this is a good one to bring up. October 25th through November 3rd, the Georgia State Fair is going to be at Atlanta Motor Speedway. Guys, if you have not gone on the internet to check this out, I'm one of the people pushing quality of life events all the time. We need more concerts. We need more events. People can take their fam, you know, take your family to. You can take your spouse out, too, for a nice, you know, for an evening out on the town. Go check out the live music acts. Go look at the midway rides that are out there. It's good. It's good. And don't be surprised if you don't run into me out there, because this is really a good lineup that they have set up for the Georgia State Fair, Atlanta Motor Speedway, October 25th through November 3rd. I think it's going to be a good one.
Anybody else have any comments? County attorney, you have any comments?
Oh, sir.
County managers, you have any comments?
Yes, Chairman. A brief comment. Just want to briefly touch back on some of the comments made by Mr. Richardson earlier tonight. The staff has gone back, Mr. Don Ash has gone back to respond to some of the comments that he made back at the October 1st meeting. I've given a handout to the board members to kind of clarifies and goes over, clarify some of the points that were made by Mr. Richardson at that time. Don is here to address them. And just really briefly, three questions that he wanted to make sure he clarified. One was whether Elkins service is available to operate in intrastate commerce. And according to Mr. Captain Doug Ayers, the regional commander for the Department of Public Safety's Motor Carrier Compliance Division, and he's actually the supervisor of the gentleman that spoke, Sergeant Smiley, that spoke with Mr. Richardson on the first. Don has been in communication with Captain, Captain Ayers, and he's responded. He's gone back, watched the video, and he was able to respond to some specific questions that Mr. Ash gave him. And again, specifically the concern about Elkins records starting to be valid to operate in intrastate commerce. And according to, again, Captain Ayers, their current records show the Elkins in recovery is properly registered as an intrastate carrier. Second question was, has a carrier had, did the carrier have elapsed in their ability to tow since 2007? I think the confusion here was, while they did cease their ability to have interstate operations, that does not have any impact, is far different from intrastate operations. And, you know, that point was made, so they are still valid as an intrastate carrier. And there's apparently an indication, a statement from Mr. Richardson regarding that the carrier was placed out of service due to drug abuse. And again, Mr. Captain Ayers reiterated that he has no record or no evidence of that comment as well. There's some other comments. One other question regarding information provided by Sergeant Smalley, and again, that information being provided to the staff. You know, the challenge with staff is, you know, not knowing with what Mr. Richardson is coming in to speak about prior to his comments, staff would be happy and would welcome the opportunity to sit down. the opportunity to sit down and either present to the Commissioners on an individual basis or back here in a public setting, to speak on exactly what the status of the current record ordinance is, the exhaustive efforts that have been done by the staff to get it to the point where it's at, and just everything that's gone into establishing that record ordinance, and going to give some clarification to the board and to the public on what's been done, where we stand to date, and so we are in full compliance as we stay, as we sit here today.
Okay. Thank you so much. Their coming meetings Tuesday, November 5th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, November 19th at 6:30 p.m. are regular board meetings, and we all know that November 5th is Election Day. Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th, all county offices will be closed and adjourned for the Thanksgiving holidays. Somebody move, we adjourn.
Sunday.
Have a motion District Five, correction District Four, second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Guys, don't forget your flag.